We have to investigate it, which means we have to go to school and interview children. We have to go to their homes and make home visits and interview parents, caregivers and things like that. And those are another very time-consuming investigations that take several hours, which again are taking our patrol officers off the street because we're having to do these mandated investigations that we just can't breeze through or overlook, and those are very lengthy ones. And I would say, I don't have the statistics, this child protection.
We just do assists for a lot of them, but. Even some of these investigations, you know, we'll get these what they're called mark reports. And some of them will be based off of our investigation originally, you know, so it just comes back around to us.
And understand that every report we take in, whether it's adult protection or child protection, there has to be an investigation, but that doesn't mean that that investigation always ends in a criminal prosecution. Because a lot of times we'll do our investigation and determine that there was no abuse occurring or there is no child safety issue, but we still have to investigate it and report all the evidence and everything that we found in statements that we took to keep that on file in case of future events or future reports. So these aren't things we can just go report and say, oh, it's unfunded, forget about it. We have to take the report in, do an investigation and type up extensive police reports to keep on file. So those are things that have really changed in the last five to 10 years that are really tying our officers off.
Question for you Captain Teke, in regards to the individuals you said had residence here in La Sueur, but were spending their time in Jordan. That's obviously a parole violation as a person was apprehended and.
Yeah, they were, yep, they were apprehended and charged with failing to register as a predatory offender and are headed back to prison, yeah. It's a felony, it's a serious offense, yeah.
So that's very cool.
So if I may, I have this incident statistics graph up here. Really what the point is of this is really to focus on, you know, what are our top 50%? What do we spend the most of our time doing as far as our incidents go? Now, this doesn't necessarily mean that this is a time allocation. This is obviously numbers because a traffic stop doesn't take as long as an investigation. Obviously, keep that in mind. But, you know, look at the top five, traffic stop, assistance, parking complaint, suspicious activity, medical and animal complaints up there as well. So those are the number one incidents we have. But I think the point that Chief Kelly and Captain Teke are getting to is there's a lot of investigations that go on that take a lot of time as far as, you know, take away from patrol time and things like that. And I guess we're kind of setting the table to talk about the speed stuff because it's, you know, speeding is an issue in our community as it is in many other communities. And, you know, allocating the police force accordingly, prioritizing those things. There's just a lot of other things going on. Not to say that speed isn't a priority, but, you know, we're obligated by the state to do some of these things that really do take up a lot of time.
That's a liberal values.
So as you're talking about this, how much, I'm sorry, as you're talking about this, how much additional time do you think you're spending on these types of things over the last 10 years now? Well, where the line fades away, that's 90% of what we do. That's it. And you're not even taking the local effect. If it snows, I go out and make sure people got their sidewalks clear, you know? The nuisances and some of those things, those take up time. You know, as.
To give a number of hours would be difficult just because we track the incidents. We don't really track the time. Do you know what I mean by that? An investigation takes what it takes. We don't really, we don't track how many hours that took because we're just doing the investigation.
And that 900 plus of traffic stops, you know, if there's a DWI in there, that's three hours easy where there's not a cop on the street.
And traffic stops are also our kind of gateway to make contact with people, specifically criminals that will, that often lead to more complex investigations as well. So an example of that would be about three weeks ago, well, a month ago now, we had a case where, sorry. We had some stolen golf carts in town from a business up on Forest Prairie Road. And as a result of a traffic stop, we were able to identify a suspect and do three separate search warrants and recover nine stolen golf carts as well as some methamphetamine and found a felon in possession of some ammunition and several people with outstanding arrest warrants. So that was a result from one traffic stop. So that statistic gets marked as one traffic stop. But in the scope of things, it's one traffic stop that turned into a felony theft investigation, felony drug possession, apprehension of several wanted felons and felon possession of a firearm. So that took, I mean, it started with a traffic stop on like a Sunday afternoon and that case ran into Monday morning, Monday morning into Tuesday, yeah.
Two search warrants and just last week I, we got another golf cart of other residents.
Yep.
So, you know, it's something like, it'll just show up as a number here, but, you know, that next morning, that's all we were doing was putting people in jail and searching property.
So there was probably a good six or eight hour timeframe where we didn't have any patrol officers patrolling the streets because all our officers are tied up in these investigations.
Captain Oliver, question.
I have a quick question about predatory offenders and child protection. Those strike me as, the term, common term is unfunded mandates. The state's telling us to do it, but they're not funding it nor is the county. Is that correct? Is there any separate funding?
No, there's no separate funding.
That's something we might want to pursue with CGMC or leaving Minnesota cities because they're putting a strain on our budget by doing that. And frankly, affecting our coverage because we're using our officers for those purposes. Thank you, appreciate it.
How are the cameras working out for you guys?
Great.
Good, yeah, cameras have been awesome. Making things easier?
Yeah, we get requests sometimes. I don't know what's going on. My perception is we seem to be going hands-on with people a little more than we used to. When I started in this business, we were always on hands-on. But now it seems like getting people into police cars and some of that, they decide to fight. We've had that body camera footage is very useful. You know, it shows people high control and just losing their mind for a while. And that's beneficial to us. You know, we've had the squad cameras for, since '07, I think, and, you know, that's beneficial also. But this is nice because where we are, they are.
One of the key aspects that I was interested in when we started talking about this was the time that it was supposed to be able to help you guys save. When we have different things that are taking more and more time.
Yeah, and I don't know if these necessarily save us time. It makes the, it makes the chain, custody chain of evidence much simpler because we can submit all of our evidence electronically to the prosecuting attorney's offices. So like these videos are just sent to them via email instead of having to mail them or drive them over there. But as far as like investigative or report time goes, it doesn't really cut down on that because even though we have the video, we still need to complete investigations and still need to complete narrative police reports in order to start the charging process for any criminal prosecution. So it doesn't really cut down on time for that, but it has done wonders in evidence, capturing evidence, initial response evidence, you know, especially like a domestic assault situation where during the officer's initial response to that call, a lot of times the first contact we make with those people, whether it's a suspect or a victim, those are the best statements that we get from those people, it is that initial contact. So as soon as I step on my police car and I say, are you okay? What happened? Right away, they're excited, they're intoxicated or whatever, and they're uttering great statements for our cameras that we're able to capture in real time. Whereas prior to having these, after we would go to a scene like that and secure it and place people in custody, it would be at that time that we would go back and take a victim's statement or a suspect's statement under Miranda and things like that. And usually by that time, things have calmed down a little bit. People are a little bit more removed from what just happened and their statements change or aren't as truthful as they were when they first arrived. So we see a big change in able to prosecute assaults and domestic assaults because of that, we're able to capture that evidence as soon as we're on scene. And I think that's probably the biggest pro I see.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think there's any time saving because the police work just takes time. To do it right, you need to, you need to do a good job. I don't encourage guys to speed through, you know, that three-hour DWI. That's all just, there's observation, there's running the instruments, there's running them to jail, there's all those elements. And then when they get back to the office, of course, they have to have a report that needs to be done. So you need to document all of that because the next morning I'll be in there looking to see that it's there. So it just, the nature of the business is if you're going to do the job right, it takes time.
City Administrator, go ahead.
If I may, I've thrown up a graph kind of to keep the conversation rolling. And what you see here is just the annual call totals for the police department. And keep in mind, we haven't, we haven't increased our personnel in this timeframe. But in around 2008, we're at 2,000, 2,500, we're up to almost 4,000 calls. So you can see it's a pretty significant increase over the years without increasing personnel. So there's a lot of stuff going on and our group is getting, you know, more efficient. They're forced to with some of these unfunded mandates to become more efficient in their operations, you know, based on the call load that we're seeing too.
Chief Kelly, I had a couple of questions. I don't know if you had a chance to get the email that I forwarded to our city administrator this morning. Wonder if you might be able to go ahead and talk a little bit about these and for the benefit of those on console. Basically, the question was, what exactly is balanced policing? And in your opinion, are we staffed and equipped to handle La Sueur at this time? I ask that because looking at your statistics going back about the last 10 years, we have about 1,500 more calls than we did 10 years ago. And if memory serves, we've probably only come up in budget over the last 10 years, approximately $200,000 in any given year from where we were 10 years ago to where we are today. So my question ultimately would be, are we properly equipped? Do we need to go ahead and add another officer? Do we have all the tools that you guys need to do your jobs? And should we be looking at perhaps maybe augmenting our active, our full-time police department with additional reserves to go ahead and take care of the situations like we do when we have an officer that's out because of medical conditions?
Well, I, you know, the, the number shows that we've increased a lot of calls, but I think we're maintaining fairly well. You know, if I, if I thought another officer would help, I would certainly ask for it. But, you know, right now it's just got a steady hum to it. Just keeps rolling along. You know, every morning I know we're going to have X amount of calls and we're going to do this and we're going to do that. I don't know, I think we're pretty efficient in how we do our business. I think we have all the equipment that you could possibly have. You know, it's just, every once in a while I have to make a decision of policy, move some people out of doing some things to, you know, right now like medicals. If they're generally just sick, I've kind of laid down the law, let's stop going to those. You know, the ambulance can handle that. Really, we don't provide much aid to them anyway. I mean, we can't give them any medicine or anything anyway. So we kind of change things around when it comes to that. But, you know, as far as the speeding, you know, the 900 stops, obviously it's winter time. Are there still people speeding? Of course there are. They're always speeding. You know, and for the most part, we write whoever's violating the speed laws. As a matter of fact, Captain Teke mentioned that somebody, some little old lady that we stopped was wondering, what are we doing? Pretty aggressive. And I'm like, well, I don't know, I guess 900, that's, 900 plus, that's a lot of stops. But, you know, the speed is one issue. We have a, we have a trailer that we got from Savage Police Department. I'm in the process of trying to get a tech down here to see if we can get it up and running. Our other one is joint owned by the city of Cleveland and us. And that's in Cleveland, I think, right now. But those help out. You know, some of those flashing dynamic signs, they can, they can help. I still think King's Way is probably the, by far, the easiest road for people to open it up and get pulled over and sort of a lot of our stuff.
As far as the staffing, you mentioned staffing and filling our vacant officer spot. Well, it's not vacant yet. I did bring a copy of our schedule for each one of you just so you can kind of take a look at that if you'd want to. So you can see kind of how we operate and what our schedule looks like.
Well, I think while you're passing that on, I think it's pretty safe to say that as I alluded to earlier, over the last 10 years, the number of calls have gone drastically. And I think one of the things that this community is very interested in is to make sure that we do have proper policing, you know, and we don't have any shortcomings regarding staff and or equipment to do their job. Before we get more into the speeding thing, I wanted to ask you also, we've had some abatements over the last few years that we're all aware of. We've also seen that number of abatements actually diminish, which is a good thing. But the question would be, those that have had an abatement in the past, what can you guys do in regards to keep an eye on those properties?
Well, what we'll do is, you know, there's a timeframe when we first issue that abatement order. And if they don't come into compliance, then it ends up here. A small, I don't, I can think of probably just a, less than a handful of people that have actually been dealt with by the council. Usually they, they get it into compliance over time. They get, go back and resort back and then we send another letter and start that process all over again. The main thing is to try and get them to comply. And we, we work that all the time. You know, I tried, you know, I just had a guy who has a lot of cars, six. Six cars of his personal self. And I'm like, you know, I don't know why you think you can have them. You know, there's a, there's a number three that is allowed. And he's, you know, he claimed that he called somebody at City Hall. They didn't tell him about it minimum. And now here we are dealing with this. And I'm in the process of watching him, making sure he's getting rid of some of these. But that's a challenge too. I mean, just down the road, there's somebody that's got probably four or five cars and, you know, it's.
If they don't comply, they receive a citation and have to appear.
If they don't comply, then we, we do a certified and then we get a, then we get a search warrant to take the property. But we've only had to do that a handful.
I've only given one time when we've actually done the search warrant.
Yeah, over there at.
219 North.
Is there anything that the city council can do to make you guys' jobs better?
No, I, I, I think we're, like I say, I think, you know, we, we do have some staffing issues right now. We're, we're backfilling that with one of our good part-timers, so we got that coverage. Whenever you're small, I mean, this is seven people. And you can't, reserves can't do what we do. Reserves can stand at a gate and they can watch a dance. And they can watch a hockey report, they can't do what we can do. So I think the last couple of go rounds here, we've caught the, the profession as a whole is, is seeing a decline of people getting into the profession. So that's a challenge. So we time when the schools are graduating for us to post for part-time people. And we got to carry a certain amount of part-time people. And right now I think we're in pretty good shape.
Yeah, I think if you look at that schedule, I hand it out to you. The top six names that are in blue or green are full-time officers. So Chief Kelly's not on, on that schedule because he doesn't work as part of the officer rotation. He works a straight Monday through Friday day shift. So those top six names are full-time officers that make up our primary rotation. And then all the names underneath that are all part-time officers. And most of our part-time officers, probably four or five of them are full-time cops elsewhere that just work a few shifts here and there to help supplement their income and it also helps us with our coverage. And then a couple of them are newer police officers out of school. That kind of, that's how you have to work in any, any business. You got to get a part-time job, gain some experience and move on to full-time. So that's basically what the part-time roster is made up of. It's made up of full-time cops elsewhere or newly graduated cops that are looking to gain some experience by working part-time here. And then you can see the different AVs and Cs. So those are the three different shifts we have. An A shift is 6:00 AM to 6:00 PM. A B shift is 2:00 PM to 2:00 AM. And a C shift is 6:00 PM to 6:00 AM. So most days we have two officers on duty from 6:00 AM until 2:00 AM. Because on Monday through Friday, Chief Kelly is here during the day. That helps create double coverage. And then we have one officer working by himself from 2:00 AM to 6:00 AM every morning. And then we only have one officer working by himself from two AM to six AM every morning, there's only one officer on duty. So all the full-time officers are working twelve-hour shifts. We have two teams, we have Sunday, Monday, Tuesday team, highlighted, highlighted in blue there, and a Wednesday, Thursday, Friday team that's highlighted in green. And then those two teams switch off Saturdays, so each team works every other Saturday. And then on a Saturday, the full-time officers only work eight-hour shifts instead of twelves, and help make up for that time difference and coverage. We have a part-timer work two PM to two, two AM every Saturday, and that again helps with our double coverage that way. Um, then the other thing that we utilize our part-timers for is for when full-time officers take vacations or pay PTO. Whenever a officer takes PTO, we, we don't just run short or unfelt them, we fill that shift with a part-time officer so that we still maintain our double, double coverage. We would try to avoid having only one officer on staff as much as we possibly can for safety reasons and for just um, effective service. We, we need two officers as much as we can get it, um, just because our call load demands it and our patrol time demands it. Um, so like Chief Kelly said, right now, we have one officer, so one-sixth of our rotation is missing. Um, and we have been able to fill that with one of our um, part-time officers, Ian, who's done an outstanding job. Um, so that's how we're making up for our missing full-time officer right now.
Any other questions on the Dallas policing before we move on to speed? Anybody? Chief Kelly?
If, if I may, I'll kinda summarize this, um, and kinda talk about some of these speed management techniques. Um, obviously, Chief Kelly can interject. Um, but, so speed management techniques, the, the question isn't asked, well, what, how do we address this? And we started addressing this um, in different ways than in the recent, uh, re, some recent projects that we've done. But one of the ways is active enforcement. Um, in twenty nineteen, we had nine hundred and nine traffic stops. You know, as, as was alluded to, many speeding stops led to additional charges. Might've gotten pulled over for speeding, but it turned into, oh, you stole nine golf carts. You know, so there's things that happen like that, you know, and it's, it's, it's common. So you might not see that um, in some of the reports. I know we send out a weekly media report, I think that the Henderson Independent picks it up. Um, I don't think our, the sewer company news picks it up and publishes it, so...
And there are things in there, like we have active investigations or things that we don't want the media to know. We don't disclose those to the media. So they're just getting like the basic stop for speed, bark and dog. Um, we, we don't disclose everything that we do to them.
Yeah, so, you know, our officers, when they're out, um, you know, they got their radar on, they're trying to, you know, if they get somebody that's speeding, you know, it's, the, the officers have discretion. But if they get somebody that's speeding, they're, they're generally pulling them over and they're making contact with that, that individual. Um, we have passive reminders, we'll call them, and these are some things that we've implemented. We've had a speed trailer, as Chief Kelly alluded to, half, um, half owned by the Cleveland Police Department, half owned by our police department. You've seen that out. We generally don't put it out in the winter, that was a question that's been asked, just because of the salt spray and just the conditions. There's a lot of electronics in there that, you know, as much as you can seal it up, some of these things, they get, they get, you know, corrosion and things like that. So we generally don't put them out in the winter, and in general, um, speeding kinda drops off in the winter due to road conditions. So, you know, you get some ice, people are slowing down just because of those things. Um, one of the things that you'll see with this Cassa twenty-two project, there are some dynamic speed signs. Uh, you'll see some on Elmwood, you'll see some on Ferry with that project. So you'll see those poppin' up in the community. We'll have a conversation about potentially putting them in the other areas. Um, I sent out some information a while back about the effectiveness of those. Um, you know, it, it serves as a great reminder of the speed. Uh, but somebody who maybe drives by it every day, it might not be as effective. But uh, in general, I think, from what I've, what I've heard from city council is, yeah, these are something that we want in our community. The, they're new to the county too, so the county, um, on these county roads, they actually don't allow them or they, they don't have a specific policy. We've kinda pushed them to develop a specific policy so we can, we can install them in the, in the right way. They're our, they'll be our responsibility, um, to maintain, and, and, and they don't last long. They don't last as long as they do in Arizona, um, for the same reasons as the, the speed trailer with all the, the varying conditions and salt and, and those types of things. Um, and also with the Cassa twenty-two project, you're gonna see some street design changes. So not necessarily the narrowing of roads yet, but once we start talking about local streets, we might talk about narrowing the roads. That helps uh, reduce the speeds, uh, narrowed striping. So we're actually doing that, and we will be doing that in, on the Cassa twenty-two project. Narrowing up the, the striping that you see on the road to kinda give the, the drivers the feel that you're a little bit more confined, maybe you're not gonna open it up as much. And then speed transition reminders, so you know, thirty mile an hour zone ahead, that type of thing. Um, some of the challenges that we see are, you're seeing increased calls, um, you know, for things that take up a lot more time than just patrolling. So we have less officers actually, you know, patrolling just to patrol. Um, you know, there are a bunch of new types of calls, some of those unfunded mandates, and then the prioritization of a call, you know, if we have a, a domestic or something like that, that obviously takes precedence over patrolling for speed. So um, it is a, it is an issue, uh, but we're gonna kinda approach it with a multifaceted approach with all these active enforcement, passive reminders, you know, doing some street design things. Um, city council will have the ability, you know, in the near future, when we start talking about, uh, about reconstructing local streets, local roads that we actually have control or the design standards. You know, we might say we want this road to be a little bit narrower because it's a local road and, um, you know, that might have a positive or a desired effect on speed. So um, there, there's a lot of things going on. You'll see, you know, with this additional speed trailer, you'll see potentially two speed trailers out in the community this, this summer, which is good. And then we can rotate them around. Um, but yeah, I mean, our, our police force knows the areas that, that there are speeding issues and they're, they're out there. And, you know, we, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, King's Way is our number one area that we, that we write tickets. Um, Elmwood is one of them as well, Ferry, um...
Yeah, and, you know, weather does play a, you know, I've done this for a long, long time. It is like seasons. Um, speeding, uh, I'm not saying nobody speeds in winter, but uh, it does go down. Now, come spring, if we got an early spring, if it's fifty on the weekend, um, you know, we'll see speeds come up. Um, I usually use that before the robins come home, is if I can hear some car racing up the hill. Spring has sprung, so um, that, 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 that is always, it's always a, you know, always a factor that uh, people are a little more cautious in the winter. And there's a, there's a handful that are speeding, and we, we take them. But uh, you know, for the most part, the warm months, that's when that really gets to be, uh, people kinda forget about it and uh, open it up a little bit.
Since Cassa twenty-two has been getting the attention, have we had repeat offenders speeding?
Uh, well, I'm, you know, I'm...
One time is enough to get their attention.
I'm certain that we uh, we have over time, I can't take anybody offhand, but uh, you know, the, the basic traffic ticket is over a hundred dollars. If you're working at the foundry, you're just working for a traffic ticket. You know, so that's uh, I mean, we, we're aware of that too, you know, that...
And we do track repeat offenders. So in our system, when we make a traffic stop, even if it's a warning traffic stop, just a verbal warning, we're tracking that. So that the next time that person gets stopped, if they've already had their one warning, they're, they're definitely getting a ticket at that point then. So we are, we, we track that, so we do know who the repeat offenders are, and we do watch that. That's kind of a standard, in a standard traffic stop, we make a stop, we identify somebody, we run them through our computer system database, which will show, um, what their driving history is statewide and nationally. Also, we run them through our database, which locally shows the contacts we've had with that person. So if they have been stopped, and just give them a quick verbal warning for a stop sign or speed or whatever, you know, and, and typically at that time, if they have prior contacts with that same offense, we issue them a citation, we let them know, look, you've already received your warning, you know, last June, now we're enforcing the law upon you, here's your ticket. You know, and, and they really don't have any recourse to come back and say, well, this isn't fair or whatever, they got their warning, you know, yeah. So we definitely do track that.
Yeah, if I may, just to, just to circle back, you know, we obviously wanna continue and have a conversation about these types of things. We wanna make sure, you know, the way that we approach it, kinda this multifaceted approach is, is adequate, and council thinks that this is, you know, the good approach, the way that we should be approaching, um, speeding in the community. If there's things that you think we should change, now would be a time to have that conversation. Um, you know, if, at, anytime we think, um, you know, another patrol officer would be a good idea, uh, I think we'd be hard pressed to say, we, we need one more officer for speeding. Um, one thing that we've talked about, uh, internally and with the school district is like an SRO, a school resource officer, uh, potentially partnering with them along with some code compliance things, and then on top of that, have it be an officer that, you know, could do some patrol, um, but have it be a fully licensed police officer to do all of those things. Um, obviously, that takes some participation from the school, which right now, they're, they have some, uh, you know, challenging budgetary items going on right now, so... Uh, but that could be a potential partnership between the city and the school, um, to, to, to get something like that to happen. But uh, you know, don't worry, we will bring this up to like personnel and budget through the proper channels, through the budgetary process. Um, this isn't something that I think Bruce or I have identified as an immediate need to, to just really talk about, but if there is a need in the future, um, we will bring it up, uh, and, and request, you know, potentially some additional funding for that. Um, just, you know, a little, some, some information, um, you know, you might hire a, a, a full-time police officer, but really with all the, the trainings, you know, there's, there's a lot of trainings with PTO, you really get between, I think, thirteen hundred and fifty and fourteen hundred hours a year with all the other stuff on top. And they might work twenty-two hundred hours in a year. So there's a lot of things that go on that, you know, you're not actually out there patrolling because you're, you have to go do this training that, you know, we don't get, um, reimbursed for the officers to go to. Um, you know, we have, we have PTO, we have things like that. So it's, it's something that I have this group working on to, to say, well, what's the trigger for when we say, well, we have this much overtime, we should hire another officer and it makes financial sense? So we're trying to develop kinda those metrics to determine that if we want to request that in the future.
Council member Dallas?
I think that the, the biggest concern that I have is that we as a council and, um, as, as a team with EDA and the, the other groups, we're trying to grow the city. And we've got big plans for additional housing. We're forcing the issue for people to get out and use our new sidewalks and putting in these trails and so on. We have more people going to be out and about and walking around. And look at this more on the idea of, within the next three or four years, we're probably going to need to have a plan for that because that's what we're pushing for.
Might have to speak to that for a minute? Um, at the beginning, we talked a lot about investigations and how those are tying a lot of our, our time up. And I know that the council has a lot of concerns about a patrol officer being on the street as much as possible, which is a legitimate concern for us as well. We want our officers to be on the street and at least amount of time for our patrol officers in the office and be on the street as much as we can because that's where we, how we are able to deter most of our crime from speeding all the way up to major crimes. Um, and Jasper mentioned like the SRO or combination SRO traffic person. Which, which in theory could work, but the problem is like our speeding times, if we just hire like a patrol officer and think he's gonna be dedicated to traffic, it's hard for us to do that because like our, say, our traffic, high traffic times are from about four-thirty AM till about eight-thirty AM, and then again in the evening, from about three-thirty PM to about eight-thirty PM. And how are you gonna cover that with one officer dedicated to traffic? I, I think if we are gonna open up a conversation about adding an additional officer, which I'm not saying we need to right now or anything, Chief Kelly can either run down on that, we, we'd be, we'd be better to utilize somebody in an investigative role to take some of the investigative burden off of our patrol officers so that they, there's somebody that can focus on these more in-depth investigations, and it would alleviate some of the burden that those investigations are putting on our daily patrol officers. So that way, instead of the patrol officers having spent their time in the street, and their time in the office, an investigator can be doing that in investigative role, and the patrol officers can be out on the street doing their patrol duties, which would include traffic and nuisance abatement and even school patrols. Those are all part of the patrol officer's duties. Um, whereas, one thing that we have for us that, that works really well right now is all of our patrol officers also do investigations, which makes them very well-rounded police officers, which is a great asset to our community. We don't necessarily wanna do away with that, but if we can alleviate some of the burden off of them by having a core investigator, I think that would be the best use of an additional police officer in our police department if we were to move forward that in the years to come.
Statistically speaking, there's about nineteen million hoarders in this country. That said, that would be about two-hundred-and-fifty year of a sewer. Do we have issues with hoarding?
Hoarding? We do. Yeah. Um, how, and, and it's a difficult thing for us to address, it's police, it's not necessarily really a police matter. The only time something like hoarding becomes a police matter is if there are children involved and they're in an environment that's not sufficient for a child to be living in. Um, there are some, you know, bachelors and, um, elderly people that live in town or just regular adults that are, have hoarding issues that we run into on medicals or disturbance laws, things like that. Unfortunately, there's no, we have no legal authority if it's contained inside their own home and that's how they wanna live. We have no legal authority to remove them or force them to change their lifestyle. Uh, about all we can do in a situation like that is to file a report with Adult Human Services through the county, and they can follow up with any voluntary assistance that that person might request. But again, since they're an adult and there's no child being harmed, we can't stop them from living out.
But my experience with the county is, uh, if you're, um, you know, if you're a rational adult and you have just little pathways in your house, uh, the county probably won't make you get rid of it. Um, sometimes we end around by going in, they're causing health problems. Or say, over time, they do tend to, you know, respiratory issues and all kinds of things are going on. And some of these people are veterans, and sometimes we go through Veterans Administration to get that done. But uh, the reality is, um, over the years, I've seen some places, and I grew up on a farm. Uh, I think my barn was better than some of these houses I've been in. Uh, and you wouldn't know it by riding down the street. Uh, it's all contained in those walls and, um, unfortunately, I think the, probably got their hands slapped uh, trying to tell people how to live, and uh, it really, it does come down to, when it starts to affect their health, then they'll probably step in, but otherwise...
Yeah, we can't, we can't put them on a hold or jerk them from their own home unless they're in truly, immediately endangering themselves or a child.
What about if they're a utility slaps? Say they decide to just have their electricity shut off because they don't pay or their water sewer. Does that give grounds to go in and look with inside the property?
Well, we still don't, we don't have any, we don't have a reason to go there. Just because you shut off the power, shut off the water, um, obviously, it makes the situation worse. But um, we, it, there's no mechanism that all of a sudden, okay, your water's off, now the police are gonna come and inspect your place. That's, that's, that, that doesn't happen.
Does anybody else have any questions for our police department? Whether it's Dallas policing or the speed management techniques? Well, I think before we dismiss you, I think we should probably go ahead and congratulate our new captain. So I'm gonna go ahead and lead the charge on up here and shake this gentleman's hand. Congratulations.
Thank you.
If you'd like to follow me?
Yep.
Congratulations, Chief, your officer.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Captain.
Congratulations, your partner.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thanks, sir.
Woo!
I know.
Thanks, Jim.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, darling. Thank you, gentlemen. Let's move on to about the resources.
At this time, that's all the information we have. We are waiting for Min Valley to get us some information on what the pricing in terms could be. And then we'll go forward from there.
Is it possible to perhaps walk us through what that process would look like with MMPA and MBACK and how that service area thing would all work?
Yeah, I can. I'm kind of taking the lead as the point of contact with MBEZ with this. And what this would look like is so MBEZ has assets within this service territory that serve that service territory. One of the line items that they'll say, here's basically to get to the point with two, what's it going to cost for the city of La Sure to acquire this? We have the right statutorily to acquire this. Um, so, but we just have to come to an agreement with MBEZ as far as, you know, what they need to make, to basically break even on this. Now, they have substantial investment in the area. They have transformers, infrastructure, wire, you know, poles, that type of thing. We'll have to pay them for that. Uh, one of the other items that we have to pay them for is if they lose connection or connectivity to, let's say, um, the Country View Estates area, right off of Country View Drive. That's an MBEZ territory. Likely they'll have to reroute some of their infrastructure. We have to pay for that. Um, so there will be some costs. So what I foresee happening, they'll come to us, say, here's what our costs are for you to acquire this, the service territory. They'll have it listed. It'll be a number. We'll have to evaluate it and say, here's what the number is. That's just for the infrastructure costs. Now, if there's existing customers on this, which there are, um, some customers, uh, residential and potentially one very large industrial customer in Cambria. Um, they're going to come back and there's generally a ten-year, uh, revenue stream that they look at and we have to pay them some sort of what's called a mill rate, which is an additional charge, or not an additional charge, but a percentage of what our, uh, per kilowatt hour rate is to them over, you know, generally ten years of time. So, we'll have to look at that as a, as a whole and say, okay, here's what it will cost and maybe it won't, maybe it'll make, won't make sense to acquire a large industrial customer, uh, because of that cost. Uh, but the vacant land, the most important part, I think, as far as staff is concerned, is the vacant land that's owned by the EDA right now, uh, we could potentially get for basically no charge. Um, and that's, that's to me the, the number one priority for this. Um, you know, the other areas, the, the industrial area, that would be ideal, but really we will have to look and see what our, our ROI, return on investment is to get that. Um, same with the, with the residential area too. So we'll be looking at it, you know, this process takes some time. We're talking probably two to three to four months before we get their initial numbers as far as what they think, um, just those infrastructure costs are. And then from there we go on and, and negotiate and discuss what the mill rates are. Um, there are precedents, there is precedence in the area, um, for what this looks like. Um, for example, New Prague, they have their own electric utility. They're surrounded by MBEZ. They recently negotiated this exact same thing. A little different, not, I mean, there isn't an industrial customer like that by New Prague, but some of those mill rates for residential property and, uh, vacant land, those have been established and, and from my understanding, they're not going to, um, deviate from those. So, uh, in the future, what you'll see, you'll see something where there will be a cost to do this, both initially and over time. And we'll have to look at it and evaluate what we want to do. So, um, but we do have a statutory right to this area and they need to, you know, negotiate with us. Um, it's something that we have in Minnesota. Some states, we don't know how long this could last. In Iowa, there's a moratorium on service area acquisition by, um, municipalities. In general, if we annex land, we also want to make sure that part of that annexation deal is that we're kind of in parallel negotiating for that electric service territory because we have a right to it. And we, it, it'll help our, our system potentially earn, you know, profits and keep our rates low. Uh, that's kind of the name of the game is right now is people are becoming more efficient in, in what they do, um, as far as their energy usage. Um, so it's more of a quantity thing going on as far as maintaining the rates that we have. So, it's important to, to expand with our city. So, in the near future, you'll see, uh, some sort of proposal and we'll get some numbers. I honestly don't know what those will look like. I don't know exactly what they have for assets in that area. So if there's any other questions about electric service territory, really you'll see this probably, um, April or probably May, June, July in that area, you'll see something, uh, move forward. Uh, with, you know, what we think some of these costs might be and we'll have to have a continued conversation because there will be a cost to the electric utility to do this. Just so, you know, if we, if we would acquire it all versus a portion of it, um, we can, we really have the control to do what we want. So if we just want to acquire, if we get the numbers back and we say, well, we just want the EDA land, the other land, the ROI is seventy-five years. We don't want to do it. We can, we can tell them at this time, we just want to acquire the EDA land. So we have all, we have really all the flexibility, um, as far as what we want to do. It's our statutory right to have this area.
Regardless as to whether or not City of La Sure, uh, acquires the electrical service from MBACK, we can still request MBACK to charge a franchise fee, correct?
We can. And, um, just a little history, back in 2015, there was an exercise to talk about this, um, as far as having a, uh, franchise fee on the MBEZ electric utilities within the city limits. Um, and that, that item was tabled. If we want to, if we want to discuss it again, we can kind of reboot it and talk about it if that's something that we believe is a priority.
All right, we're going to catch a team this night. So, Mr. Mayor, Council, um, originally with the retreat schedule, we went ahead, as robust of an update on twenty-two, but being with the post moment here, um, quite a few things have happened in the, in the month of February, so, um, can give you a, a pretty good estimate or at least an update. Um, so in regards to the Casatuiju project, we opened bids last Thursday. Um, I'd say the results were maybe a little bit unanticipated, um, but, uh, we received two bids, um, for the project. Um, and, I'm not an advocate. So we received two bids for the project, uh, one from SM Henshams and Sons out of Jordan. Uh, they were the low bid. And then we received another one from Northland Grading and Excavating out of Webster, so east of town here. Um, as you can see, uh, we had an engineer's estimate underneath the, the two bid ranges, um, and notably underneath the low bid range. Um, and after looking at the bids and, you know, doing, doing a little bit of, uh, you know, analysis as far as, you know, talking with, with folks that, that weren't the bidders and then ultimately with that little bidder of Henshams, um, this was a large project for there. I think notably we saw that in the bidding, the bidding market. Um, this is quite a bit larger than you would, you would normally see, uh, certainly, uh, unprecedented project for La Sure County and the city of La Sure. So I think we saw that some. And then as you see, um, you know, with one, your first hand out here tonight, and we've talked about this before, but just the understanding of, again, the size, um, and, and just the, the length of impact in the community, there is a substantial stage plan to this. Um, and so there's a lot of thought put into this to, you know, allow efficiencies in production and, and, um, you know, means and methods, but notably still you have to maintain access and, and structure some, you know, timing of work relative to, to school, school, um, you know, school, uh, school year and, and different things for that. So I think that also probably had a deterrent too as well. Um, so then steps moving forward, um, right now, the, the first step or the first action is, is necessary on the county side. Um, and that is as soon as tomorrow, the county board will, will review the bids. Um, and it is recommended to award. Um, even understanding that the slight overage in the low bid, um, with the turnback and things that come is, um, is comfortable moving forward and that, that is the recommendation. Um, and then ultimately understand the project partnership and that there's a contingency element that it then will come to the city council. And that'd be the regular scheduled meeting here a week from today. Um, to, to review those bids in a little greater detail and then ultimately make an action to award that contract and proceeding construction. So, and then, uh, another update, you know, understandably, if this project does move forward, um, then, then it's, uh, full on thinking about construction and, and how we, you know, start to communicate that message and the branding. And so, um, you know, we're, we're realizing Casatuiju, Trunkai One Twelve Turnback's a little bit awkward to speak to, so, you know, maybe a little preview to the new twenty-two. We're, we're testing out some things that way, um, complete, you know, restructuring the website and, uh, really, uh, I guess leading up into, uh, the next phase of this, uh, should, should we get things, so.
For the benefit of all, could you kind of walk through what happens when the city engineers, one point six million light on what the bidders come up with? And is there like a process where you go through a scope of work, line by line, to make sure that everything lines up? Maybe you could just kind of discuss that a little bit.
Yeah, I, I sure can. So, you know, as a project develops, certainly one of this size, um, you, you look back at historic data, um, we certainly, uh, you know, have an investigation of the market, um, you mean on other bids that have been received. Um, obviously bids of that similar season are most beneficial because you get an understanding of oil prices and, and concrete prices. Um, a bid in February limits that data pool a little bit because we were one of the earlier bids and now certainly something we were targeting. Um, you know, you, you hear that you want to, you know, be an earlier bidder on, on some of your projects. Contractors are hungry and, and looking to secure that work for the upcoming season. So, um, we certainly were, were, were cognizant of that. Um, you know, there was, there was a number of bids opened the last two weeks of February and this wasn't the only one that was overestimate. Um, we had a project in Bell Plain, they were, they were ten percent over. Um, had a project in, in Janesville that was slightly under. So it, it, it's difficult to estimate, I guess is my point. Um, but to the mayor's, uh, to the mayor's comment, there was, there was some notable, um, bid items you would say that, that had, you know, uh, a factor quite a bit larger than the estimate. One of those is mobilization. There's, there's a very substantial mobilization number. Um, you know, that, that more or less is what it is. That's, that's the contractor's, um, you know, their discretion of how he wants to allocate some of that, that, that resource. Um, other things we noticed was a bituminous, um, specifically the wear course was, was naturally higher than estimate. And that was a direct tie to the oil price. And, um, there's different grades of, of asphalt and, and we're electing a little bit more robust grade. It's a C oil referred to it as. Um, and notably in La Sure County, you pay a premium for that. Now, the, the benefit is that that oil, uh, provides better longevity, um, more, you know, more resistance to cracking. Um, that's, you know, deemed by the county to be a worthwhile investment. So, um, you know, to speak to that one point six million, um, this split is, is, uh, about one point one million, um, on the county and then about five hundred thousand on the city. Um, and that five hundred thousand, most notably is, is for the utilities. Um, we, we saw, I, I wouldn't say, um, the cheapest numbers ever seen, uh, not certainly the highest, but definitely higher than estimate with regards to sand here and the water, those prices. So, again, on a project of this size with that quantity, you know, you get a couple, a couple dollar increase on, on the number of, uh, of length of water main and that, that makes a difference in the bid. So certainly. Um, we definitely don't, don't, don't strive to be the low bid, um, but, but it certainly happens and, um, I'd say another positive in this is the contractor that is the low. Um, I think, you know, as my personal experience and, and I think others in the industry, they're a capable contractor, they're local, coming from Jordan. So, um, to be moving forward with them, I, I think there's a, there's a, some positive in this with that as well. They have scaled it over a project of this size. Um, or hopefully do. Um, but so that's a positive. But I hope that answered it, Mr. Mayor.
Good, thank you. If I may, just a little thing, so, the way that the engineers estimate, they get the thirteen million, six hundred and fifty-six thousand is they use prior bids, you know, existing bids, numbers, quantities, amounts, things like that, and generally slap a contingency on that, thinking, you know, there's going to be an increase. So some of that stuff, you know, you might ask, well, why is this one so low? Well, we, we try to use real world numbers to come up with the estimates. And it's just the market really, it's a, it's a good kind of a, a market test to see where the market's at. Um, and, you know, we bid and, and everybody bids in southern Minnesota and, you know, we're looking at what those bid numbers are that are coming in and using that for the next bid. So it's, it's one of those things where you hope that your numbers are good, the ones that you have, the real world numbers. And you hope that the contingency that you slap on there to say, well, we know that there's going to be an increase from nineteen to twenty. Um, this is a two-year project, so there's probably some uncertainties with that too. So maybe that contingency could have been, been higher on our end, but um, in the realm of, of this large of a project, uh, you know, eleven percent overage isn't out of the ballpark, you know, as far as what I, what I would recommend to, uh, 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 for, for approval with the city council. So, you know, if there, if there would have been, you know, the eighteen million, I don't know if that would have been enough. That probably would have been a different conversation. Um, you know, because the county has limited funds as well for this, as, as do, uh, we do. But, um, as far as the construction costs, we've always kind of stated the, the five million dollar range and that's what our costs are with this, um, you know, it's around, oh yeah, the next one. Yeah, so, and we, we've always had a estimated, you know, worst case, it's about five million dollars. So, um, yeah, I'll let Cory talk about this a little bit more.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. I have one quick question. Back in the prior slide, you don't have to go back, but it uses the term engineer's estimate. It's the thirteen million plus. Who are those engineers, to be clear? Is it the county and you, or is it just the county?
It's a collective effort. So the, it, it, it's, as, as the consultant owner in this project, certainly most notably, you know, we, we have the, the, the most discretion. We're certainly presenting that data for, for review and comment. And obviously operated as, as a city engineer here within the city. Again, that's my, my input. And then, yes, from the county and, and, and obviously amongst, you know, Bolton Make as a firm. So there is, there is a lot of analysis. It's not singular with one individual. Um, and, and it, you know, it, it, as, as Jasper, uh, mentioned, it, it, it is, you know, with, you know, lack of a better way to describe it, it's the best guess.
If, if I may too, just kind of give a little strategy about this from my end. We want to have it be, you know, we don't, uh, the engineer's estimate is, is knowledge that the bidder has when they bid. So they know what we think it's going to cost. So they're going to look at that. If we have a, a, you know, an even more inflated engineer's estimate, that might actually, that could potentially drive the cost up. So it's this delicate game that we play. We want the numbers to be accurate. Um, but we don't want to, you know, overestimate because they might say, well, these, these entities have planned for this. You know, if it's a, you know, we say it's an eighteen million dollar project that comes in at fifteen, well, sure, yeah, that came underneath, underneath the engineer's estimate. But if we overestimate, that could have a, an adverse effect to driving those prices up. So, you know, I prefer to have a, an engineer's estimate that comes in under the bid because they, they have that information and it's, it's all kind of, it's this kind of interesting game that could be, be played. So, it's not all that bad to have an engineer's estimate that comes in, you know, below what the bids are because you know that, you know, they get a number that we inflated and then, then they in turn inflate it because they know that we could, we could get it. That's an issue when we have only a few bidders, in this case two. So, I'm glad that, I'm glad that we got the number that we did.
I'll second that. Um, so as with ASBID then, um, you know, we've been talking, uh, frequently that this is a partnership, county, city, cost share. Um, so then we took then the ASBID results and we broke those out and then, um, separated those based on, you know, the, that, the true fund that, that those improvements are being provided to and then ultimately the, you know, the compensation for the improvement. So, um, here is that final breakdown then of the city participation for the Casatuiju project. And, um, as Jasper alluded to, um, we're just slightly over that five million dollar mark. Um, and, and the mark, you know, as estimated was, was approximately four point six, four point six and some change. So, again, kind of speaking of that, about four hundred thousand dollar, um, increase based on that, on that little bid. But, you know, as we've talked often, the, the improvements, uh, that this project is allowing for are substantial in every one of these. Um, we're, we're, we're allowing for some conversion in underground, um, electric, water fund. I mean, we've got four and six inch water main on Ferry and Elmwood, we're going to a ten inch. And so the, the, the improvements, you know, comparable to this price are, are, are substantial. Um, and notably making those improvements, you know, as we've talked often, for a five million dollar price tag on a fifteen million dollar project. So it's a, I, you know, understandably the bids are what they are, but, but still I think that recommendation to move forward, you know, is, is unwavering. Um, the need is there and, um, and, uh, I guess we, we know what the cost is now. So, any, any questions on Casatuiju?
Yeah, what we don't know though is whether or not the county's going to go ahead and accept that. I mean, we as a city, we give the real life. That doesn't necessarily mean that the county's going to go ahead and accept the fact that it'll be one point one billion more.
Yeah, so we, we've, I've, I've been in close communication with the county. Um, obviously that, that meeting is going to be held tomorrow morning. Um, and, uh, the, the county's, uh, recommendation from the county engineer who's, who's obviously making that refer of the board is to, to move forward with the recommendation of board. So, um, I think, uh, you know, obviously the votes still have to be, have to be had, but, um, you know, after the bid and working through the results and certainly now as we've been able to process those, um, the, the message from the county is, is a commitment to move forward.
Mr. Mayor, I have a quick question.
Counselor.
Uh, this is actually for both city, more for the city ministry, I believe. Some of this cost will be recouped through assessments. Is that correct?
That is correct. So we're going through the benefit appraisal process right now. Um, and one of the, the benefits that we have with this is, you know, I was going to mention the ratio that you see in the funds, really the trails that you see up there, that's general fund contributions. Everything else is through some sort of enterprise fund. When we go and we want to construct a local street, keep in mind that, you know, with this situation, we're at, what, forty percent of the total project cost? So sixty percent of the cost, the surface cost is, is on the county. When we do our local streets, that'll be all on us. So, uh, that'll, that'll limit the scale and, and, and scope of what we can do here. Um, but yeah, so, so there, there's very little, you know, with this, very little general fund contribution to actually do this project. It's heavily centered on the, on the, um, enterprise funds. All right, well, from there we'll move on to the water system plan projects. So this is, we've, we've commissioned a water plan study, um, to be done and started last year. It's continuing on into this year. Uh, we have some preliminary results. I'll turn it over to Public Services Director, Kachera.
Thank you. Uh, yes, we've been working on a water system plan, a DNR conservation plan as it was formerly known. Uh, staff will be meeting to finalize the DNR plan, uh, in about ten days. And then at that time, we will get our second, third rough draft. It's not final, but we're getting closer to the actual water system plan and that's where these recommendations are coming out right here. Uh, storage, we have, uh, currently we have, uh, three towers. The upper tower up by, we call Cambria, is three hundred thousand. The middle tower, uh, over by the dog park is two hundred and fifty thousand. Lower tower is five hundred thousand. Um, simple math, one oh five, one point oh five million. Um, that's not enough, our average. Uh, twenty forty projection for our average day is just over two million gallons of water a day. Uh, so there has been talk, we found the documents back from early two thousands saying that the, uh, Boray Water Tower was due for replacement. Um, this study is just reconfirming those numbers. Uh, the, the seven hundred fifty to one million, that is, uh, something to be subjected to, that obviously we have to do some more internal analysis to see is there going to be further development in this system and the lower system for the demand to justify going up to the one million gallon mark from the seven hundred and fifty. So that's why that, uh, is here. And then at that time, we would decommission and remove the Boray Water Tower. Uh, the next component of this is the treatment, the water plant. The water plant was built at a two million gallon, two point oh million gallon per day. Current operations, we can only obtain one point six. Uh, when we, obviously if we're going for a two million gallon per day operation, one point six will not satisfy. So, uh, we will be doing, looking and doing some studies on the plant, seeing if there's ways to change operations, change treatment, change, if it's media change out, what we can do to try to optimize the current plant to extend its life. And if those, uh, times can all avail, we will have to look at additional, uh, potential additional treatment facilities. Uh, production now is also identified. Uh, we have an issue if we lose one of our main wells, um, we don't produce enough water. Um, a big thing to note here, La Sure is very rare. Our, uh, our commercial industrial demand is seventy-five percent of our daily water provision. Our residents are only twenty-five percent. So we are very commercial driven, which is a very good thing. And it can also be very bad.
Could you go back to the two gallons per day set for usage, then one point six billion gallons for treatment? That treatment, is that the waste treatment facility?
No, this is the water treatment facility.
The authorization of, of water and all that. So how can we be using one point six or two million when we only can handle one point six? Where's the other four hundred thousand gallons coming from?
We can't get it through the plant. The plant is not operating up to its design specifications. And that's where we need to, you know, if it is media, if it is chemicals, if it is aeration. Is there operation differences that need to be done to try to increase the efficiency to get it to the design standard?
So if, if I may, I think to kind of summarize, I think we're trying to get about two million gallons of production, uh, day is what we potentially will need. Yep. Uh, our current waste, or wa, not waste, water treatment plant does one point six. It's designed for two. Now, we, we're going to try to find out a way, because it's designed that way, but we can't get it to actually perform at one point six million gallons. If we're going to design a system for two million gallons, we'll either need to figure out a way to get our current system, water, water treatment system to perform at two million, or do an additional treatment plant, or something to get us up to that plan, two million gallons per day.
You know, it makes sense now. I was using the word use as opposed to strive for it. So now, yep. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, I believe I was talking about the well, yes. So if our primary well, well seven does go out, we are limited to a one point six million gallon per day, which obviously is less than two. So we're back at the same situation. So there is discussion of, uh, adding a well, reproduction of three other wells. Uh, we will be obviously working with DNR to move forward up down that avenue. Uh, distribution, piping, belving. Uh, there are some deficiencies noted and that will be coming forward to you in the water system master plan. Uh, in the distribution grid, some of those are going to be, uh, we are starting to identify some of those. Cory brought it up with the increased in, uh, increased size of water mains. Uh, another thing we are putting in at the corner of Bridge and Fourth is called the PRV, a pressure reducing valve. So it'll give us greater fire flows and redundancy flows from the middle system down to the lower system. So we can actually have more than one way to feed the lower system. So that's another part that is actually going to be happening in the twenty-two project to help out our distribution.
So if I may, kind of summarize, we've, we've kind of, as a city, we've known some of these issues. Um, we've, we've projected growth, um, you know, as early as the early two thousands, we've known that, you know, our capacity isn't there and if, if we, if we continue to grow, which we've grown a little bit, um, you know, we're going to need to be able to provide that service to, you know, really our industrial customers rely on it, right? So, one of the things, and I don't know if you were going to plan on talking about it, is we, one of our, our second highest water user, Cambria, has one source of water. It's not looped. So one of the ideas is, you know, running up, running a water main up Forest Prairie Road to, to close that system off and loop it to have redundant water sources because, you know, an example, when, when Docky Lane had a water leak, water main break, we had to communicate with Cambria and say, you know, you have, what is their, their tank is two hundred fifty thousand gallons?
Three hundred thousand.
Three hundred thousand gallons, the water tower up on top of the hill. You know, they use, they could potentially use, what, thirty thousand gallons per day?
They average sixty-seven, so they go from thirty to ninety to a hundred in a single day.
So we had to work with them and say, hey, you know, we're going to, you're, we're not going to be able to fill that tank up with water. So we need to make sure that you, you guys, maybe if you can limit your water usage. If we would have a loop system, we wouldn't have to have that conversation. So, it's redundancy. They're our second highest user and, and ultimately for growth north along one sixty-nine, it's essential to do it. So, there aren't many houses that will be developed on Forest Prairie Road, but it's, it's an essential, um, part of our infrastructure.
Um, yeah, so go a little, little more detail on that. Yeah, the Boray Tower currently is five hundred thousand gallon tower. It doesn't have enough adequate capacity for the daily demand. So Jasper was just talking about, uh, the upper tower, the Cambria Tower. That's a three hundred thousand gallon tower. All the water that gets up to that upper system first goes through this tower and this distribution system to then get pumped up to the upper system. So this five hundred thousand gallon is taking the load of the three hundred thousand gallon tower plus our biggest user in the city of Agarpur, which uses, oh, what was that fantastic number? It was very large. I guess not there. There it is. Oh, about five hundred and forty thousand gallons a day for Agarpur. So.
Five hundred thousand.
So I'll just point out that it's, it's clear. So if they use five hundred thousand gallons a day, the water that Cambria uses, they use sixty to a hundred, that doesn't add up, but they're both using that. And, you know, let's say we have a well go down and we're not able to fill the, the upper tower. There could be a potential. There could be a potential, um, shortage of, of water if there's a perfect storm right now with this tank only being five hundred thousand gallons, and.
The water plant and the well capacity.
So, that's kinda why we're having these conversations.
Okay, uh, distribution, yeah, I mentioned this PRV pressure reducing valve by Bridge and Fourth, that is part of the twenty-two project. Will improve the lower distribution flow. We're also, Jasper, Administrator Kugel mentioned the plan for the upper system to get a loop involved up there. That will be, uh, part of the distribution plan coming forward is trying to get a redundant feed, uh, to go up the hill. Part of this plan, we're also looking at the options, if we do have to do a new well, if we do have to do a new water plant, do we put it up on the hill instead of pushing water uphill, start using gravity to bring it back down? That's all part of the ideas going around in this whole study. Questions this far? Treatment, so, yes, the water filter plant, water treatment facility. So, yes, we will look at filter operation, chemical feed, aeration, just all the different components. It, um, I, I don't wanna say it's like a wastewater plant, but it's really like a wastewater plant. It's, it's almost like a living organism that you have to feed the right way to get the right results out. And so, going in there and just turning switches is not gonna do good things for the public. So, all this testing will have to be done, will have to be done very slowly and methodically, so we don't upset the distribution network. Uh, production, yes, I mentioned this before, if we lose our primary well, which is well seven, uh, which is rated at about seven hundred fifty gallons per minute. So, we lose that, we drop right down to one point six million gallons per day out of our remaining three wells, which actually annually is decreasing because those are open wells and they are silting in. And we need to, we are actually looking at redeveloping another well this year to get our capacity back. Any question on treatment and production?
Alright, I'll, I'll segue to this one, um, ten-year streets and utility plan. I'll focus on this because in, um, for the goal setting that, that you'll see later on tonight, um, one of those is to potentially adopt a ten-year street, uh, street and, uh, or a street and in, infrastructure improvement plan. Um, this is the start, and, you know, I think we're gonna showcase these, because these are all county roads that you're, you're looking at here. Uh, really, I think Rich, myself, Cory have worked hard to get the county to reinvest in La Sure. And I think we have a path forward for them to reinvest in their roads in La Sure. Um, there will be, there's one little kinda, kinda one thing that we're, we'll have to talk about related to CASA twenty, or thirty-seven. Um, but in general, you know, you're gonna see a pretty large influx of, of money reinvested, not only with local funds, but with county funds in our road network.
I appreciate it, thank you, Administrator Kugel. So, the, the, the start of the ten-year streets and utility plan that, that we're, we're, we're planning and proposing here tonight is really gonna, gonna kick off right, right in twenty twenty with CASA twenty-two. Um, it's, it's a huge improvement, city, we've been talking about that for, 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 for a while now. Um, CASA twenty-two and thirty-six, those are gonna be, um, you know, the focus of twenty twenty on that staging map. Um, the continuation then in twenty twenty-one is still CASA twenty-two, and then, um, the improvements that I'm fair, CASA twenty-six. Um, that really completes that grid then, you know, we had a discussion about, about North Main Street, but, um, at this time, that need does warrant, um, you know, consideration as part of this ten-year plan. And really, one of the reasons why, uh, we, we allocated resources elsewhere. Um, you know, then looking forward, uh, beyond this CASA twenty-two project, the, the next one up and, and notably, the greatest need in the community is CASA thirty-six, South Main Street. Um, the condition of the utilities there is, is, um, is, is dire, to the extent that we're gonna be doing some emergency lining work and things this spring for some sanitary sewer, um, undersized of water main there. Um, and, and the road surface notably is, is deteriorated as well. So, we, we have been, you know, talking with the county and, um, you know, we believe we, we have a plan forward that that would be literally the next one up, and that'd be programmed for twenty twenty-two. Um, and then, as Jasper mentioned, that really completes our CASA system and, and with, I guess, exception of CASA thirty-seven. Um, and looking at the county road network now with this turnback and things, you know, there's, there's gonna have to be a future discussion about, really, how does that fit in the CASA system, um, and really, what does that look like moving forward? Um, and so, that's, that's a discussion, uh, I think at a future time. Uh, certainly, there's gonna be needs more in detail between city and county on that. Um, but that, that has need, but we're identifying that as, as a latter need, uh, but on this slide, because it's a CASA at this time, so.
One thing I'll just mention, I see some people squinting at the PowerPoint. This map has been included as eleven by seventeen in your, in your packet too. If you wanna look at it in detail, it's, it's one of the eleven.
So, yeah, every map that we have tonight, um, is in, is in larger print in order of the, of the, of the PowerPoint, thank you.
That three-tenth of a mile though, between the CASA thirty-six project and the CASA thirty-seven projects, in that five-year period increases to three point three million. Is that right, or is that strictly based off what, uh, we anticipate the inflation to do over that five-year period?
The, the, the truthful answer is, is that at this time, CASA thirty-six is, is, is being presented to receive more county funds than CASA thirty-seven will. So, that, the reason for the discrepancy is, is the, or the difference I should indicate, um, is that the, the CASA thirty-seven receive less.
And I can touch on that, 'cause we'll eventually have to come into an agreement with, with the county, but CASA thirty-seven, CASA, as everybody knows, County State Aid Highway. Um, we throw that word around, or all these acronyms, and it kinda can lose some people, but County State Aid Highway thirty-seven, it's been under the county's jurisdiction from the, let's say, the beginning of time. Um, one road that they put in that you could say, well, now it's redundant because we have Kingsway. Like, I believe the county has no intention in, in investing in that road. Um, and the idea would be, and this is obviously, we haven't had any agreements to this, would be, in order to move CASA thirty-six up on their schedule, we would have to take back CASA thirty-seven, and it would be our street that we own. Um, you know, this is obviously something that we'd have to discuss within the city council, they can make a decision for the community. Uh, but the, 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 the fact of the matter is, I don't believe that the county has any intention in investing in that road, nor they have had any intention of investing in that road, basically since Kingsway was constructed. Um, so, that'll be a question that we'll have to, we'll have to evaluate here at council is, you know, if we are willing to take over CASA thirty-seven, which we, you know, I think if you're driven in, it needs some work, um, we would then be able to move that CASA thirty-six up to the county's schedule. If we wouldn't be willing to do that, the CASA thirty-six, I think, basically falls off the county's schedule. Um, so, it's, it's, it's something that we need to discuss and have a, a formal, uh, you know, agreement with the county, and if this is something that we wanna pursue. But, you know, you look at the cost for CASA thirty-seven, that's, I mean, that's a lot of money, right? So, and you'll see what the proposed plan is, the proposed plan, the ten-year plan that you'll see, has that broken up into two sections. Um, you know, with the idea, you know, I think, in general, um, you know, we're, we're planning for that because we think CASA thirty-six that trumps it, because it's, it's definitely the worst road section as far as surface and utilities go in our community. And that's how we get that, that section of road done.
And if I might add, uh, you know, part of the, the future discussion that, that Administrator Kugel and I are alluding to is the county is actively going on, they're, they're planning and implementing the CIP on their own side, and, and that is, that is absolutely right now current. Um, and so, they, they are working through their needs as well, and, and understanding where their funding is at and prioritizing their needs. So, it, it's fluid in the sense that there's still, there's discussions going on back and forth, but there's just been no, there's been no final decisions made. So, that's the reason, most notably, why it'll have to be a future discussion, 'cause that, that formal proposal hasn't been presented yet.
Could you have something? Council member, that would be spurious.
As I understand it, and I, and maybe you want, but, one of the main issues with thirty-seven is that there aren't storm sewer up there?
There's definitely storm sewer issues, um, there are some storm sewer. But, as you saw with the sidewalk project, there's, there's really nothing in place that could help some of those areas that had some intersection improvement. So, you know, that's something that would be added, that would be a significant cost, you know, generally to the city. So, yeah, you are correct, a lot of that is heat drainage that just, you know, eventually makes its way down the hill.
The, the, the early part of the ten-year plan, you know, we, we're focusing and, and we've been talking a lot about the county roads. And then, the, the, I guess you call it, the, the, you know, the mid to latter part then is gonna be focusing on the local road network. Um, and these would be, you know, these would true local streets, um, and then these would be, you know, cost born all by the city. Um, and so, uh, we, we, we did an exercise, engaged other city staff members, um, you know, notably, the managers of those enterprise funds, and we, we ranked, we had every one of them ranked individually their highest priorities within, within the community, um, relative to, to the, the infrastructure that they manage. And then, we took an average and compiled then this list, and this list is meant to identify just one through sixteen, not in order, um, just the, the areas of greatest need, of greatest priority. Um, and so, this is really the, the foundation then of, of beginning to implement that, that, the rest of that ten-year plan. Um, and again, um, these maps are included in larger size, but essentially allowing us then to, to map out what this true ten-year plan looks like. Um, and you'll see the figure there with some, some allocation as far as the, the, the year that those improvements would be made. And then, um, again, listing those years, the roads, and then that estimated cost, uh, for that total, um, CIP value. So, uh, you know, a, a pretty powerful table there and, and math. I mean, notably, uh, uh, you know, if, if this plan was followed, it'd be a sizable improvement to infrastructure within the community, but, but understandably, at, at, at a cost too, so.
If I may, in, the, the numbers that you see here, and, and I wanna just make sure, we had our finance discussion last week. We talked about bonding capacity, there are bonds that are falling off, you know, really, for the infrastructure, or for the enterprise funds, that twenty twenty-eight year is very important, um, as far as the sanitary sewer goes. Um, what we would likely do to fund some of these things moving forward, because I think we're, we've positioned ourselves with bonds falling off and with, with utility rates, um, some proactive adjustments to that. For every other fund except for sanitary sewer, we can do this. Um, but this also gets, we, we basically reinvest all of our bonding capacity into streets to do this, to do this model. And that's, you know, I'm, from, from the comments I receive, you know, they're mostly related to streets. So, this is by no means what we're going to do, this is what we would be able to do if we would invest, reinvest all of our, our bond capacity that's falling off into streets. Now, we may say we wanna invest some of that into streets and some of it in the parks, or, you know, have a contingency or reduce property taxes. There's things that we can do, and, and we have all the choices in the world, um, to be able to do that. What we've done here is basically identify the priority areas, you can see them listed here. Uh, roughly, it's about five million, let maybe a little bit more, a little bit less every other year, um, until twenty twenty-nine. But, keep in mind that that also means that the bond capacity that's falling off would be reinvested into streets. It's needed, there's no question about it, we have aging utilities, aging street surfaces, um, there's been deferred maintenance. We went nine years without doing a street project, so, you know, all signs point that we're behind. Um, but, you know, it's not to say that we can't say that, get this list, say, we have a list now, we know what our priority areas are, but instead of investing all of our opening up bond capacity into this, we might wanna push it back, or, we, we have those options. So, just know that, moving forward, um, that thirty million dollars, that's a big number, um, you know, but, you know, realize that's, that's also just city contributions. If you look at what the county's also contributing, you know, throw another, um, you know, ten million dollars on that, eleven million dollars, correct?
Yeah.
So, you know, you're looking at, you know, potential investment of forty million dollars that we can, we could do in the community over the next ten years. So, it's a, it's a, it's, it's great as far as being organized and knowing and having our priorities set. It's really the, the council's direction as far as what we wanna do and at what pace we wanna do it. There's no question in my mind, and I think anybody's mind, that it's, it's, it's needed, you know? But, as far as the pace goes, that's really up to, up to city council.
Okay, so, question, we have pavement management plan, as we know. When we take that and overlay that over this ten-year street and utility plan, I wanna make sure that we all understand what's going on here. We started with four hundred thousand last year, we're at four fifty this year, and that's to grow another fifty thousand each year. Just to make sure that it's clear for everybody in this room, that money is not supposed to be used for these types of projects. We have eighteen point six miles of roads, we gotta use that money to take care of all the other streets in La Sure that are not gonna be affected by this ten-year street plan. True?
So, I'll clarify, that's up to city council. What we've done in order to fund this, what we've, what we've done is we've reduced that amount, 'cause right now, we're kind of in, call it triage mode, where we're doing a bunch of patching and, and fixing of potholes, and we, we spent, um, you know, four hundred thousand dollars on that last year. We have four hundred and fifty thousand dollars allocated this year. We, what we're planning on doing is not doing as much, having some of that roll over so that we have a fund for that, um, to be able to do those improvements and, and then potentially buy down some of this. But, in the future, we probably don't need that much just for s- street maintenance, especially if we have new roads, um, in most of the parts. But, so, some of that, long story short, some of that has been, you know, in order to make this happen, we'll have to reduce that street maintenance number in the CIP and move that into actual, um, improvement projects. So, i- if that, if that, that is something that we don't wanna do, we don't, we don't have to do that, then that kinda makes this a, a longer-term plan.
Well, I would hope that, I'm sure I'm just speaking for myself, but I hope it's resonating amongst my other council members. What we don't wanna have happen is a repeat of what we've seen in the past, where we go nine years without roads, and now, we're gonna go ahead and put monies into particular roads. In the meantime, any of the ancillary roads are not gonna be addressed. All right, don't we, don't we risk having those roads start to fall apart at some point? I mean, a road's only gonna last, what, five years before it's gonna need seal coating, crack sealing, that type of thing, correct?
Yeah, and we will have, you know, if you look back to twenty fifteen, um, we were only allocating about fifty thousand dollars. That's too low. You know, I think the sweet spot that we'll find to do those maintenance projects is probably two hundred thousand, you know, two hundred and fifty thousand, something like that. But I think the big thing is, that's different, is that we're making the, the conscious decision, if we do something like this, to really reinvest in our infrastructure, not only our surface, but our, our infrastructure under the road. So, yeah, I would say, you know, that's always a, a concern, that, you know, some of these other streets will get neglected. But I think if we're, we're consciously budgeting, you know, somewhere around that amount, if we need more or less, you know, we'll, we'll definitely communicate that. But, you know, this is substantial, I don't know, Cory, if you know, I, I, how many miles of road this is in the community? I mean, it's, it's, I mean, you look at the map, it's very substantial, um, for some of these areas. So, but, it is a, it, it's a choice of pace, you know, if we wanna invest more into the maintenance of these roads as opposed to actually, you know, fixing them, we can do that. Um, you know, prolong, kinda what we've done right now is we've prolonged some of these roads a little bit by doing some pretty major patching. Um, you know, we can continue that, but I think the ultimate goal is to, to rehabilitate that surface so that we get into that cycle of, you know, we can crack seal, we can seal coat, you know, we can do a milling overlay, where, you know, we've kinda missed those opportunities on some of these roads, and they're, they're too far gone now.
Justice, fabulous.
But that's in a perfect way, as we're looking at this, because we were already told earlier that our water system is going to need major work. And that's at full bonding capacity for us, and that would be just for handling roads. So, we wouldn't have the funds or be able to fund, to be able to do the water project.
So, I'm qualified by that, that, that. So, we, we would be able to do what we've planned, about five million dollars for water improvement projects is what we have in the CIP. It would work with water. Water, we have an advantage where we've kind of proactively increased rates so that we're, we're gaining revenue right now. Um, you know, we've, we've increased rates, I think, the la- basically the last three years. Um, we've kind of brought it back with the tiered system that we have. But we're generating enough income to be able to have the bond capacity, especially with the, you know, two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that's falling off to be able to do these things. Um, if we needed, depending on how aggressive we wanna be, depending on how aggressive we wanna be, you know, council can always raise the rates or adjust the rates. It's really what's the need of the community, and that's really what, what council needs to gauge is, you know, I hear all the time about the streets and, and, you know, and if that's what we wanna do, um, you know, we have a lot of deferred maintenance that we can address, it's just at what pace do we wanna do it?
I understand, and I just, I guess I'm just carrying. I understand, and I just, I guess I'm just curious as to how much of the eighteen point six miles this represents over the next ten years. Is it sixty percent, fifty percent, do we have a number? Because at some point, these other streets are gonna have to be addressed as well.
Yeah, and, 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 uh, so the idea is that this is a great start, right? This is a great start, we have our priority of the roads, and we have some numbers. The idea is that we don't just stop after twenty twenty nine, we keep building on that, you know? We finish up twenty twenty two, and then we do, we figure out what we think we're gonna do in twenty thirty. There's no question that some of these things are gonna be shuffled around as they get closer, um, or, you know, things develop, so. It's just, you know, what we've identified, uh, of that basically five million dollars a year, um, pairing that up with what we have dropping off as far as bonds go and what we can afford to do. You know, this, I mean, I'll, this is very aggressive, right? This is unprecedented in this community, or really any other community around us, but we've deferred this type of thing for quite a while, so it's, it's, it's really, you know, repeated a hundred times, it's up to council as far as the pace and what we wanna do. Um, you know, if we wanna invest other places, we can, just by no means, you know, you're not adopting anything, this is just strictly for information.
Is it possible to get the information though, that what streets have not been, uh, present within this ten year plan? So we, so we as a council have some kind of an idea what that number is of that eighteen point six?
Yeah, so you're just, yeah, we can definitely find that out pretty easily as far as what length of road this is proposed to be and what we have left, but, you know, eventually, everything's gonna have to be touched.
Right, and, and I mean, we, we know that theoretically, we need about eight hundred and fifty thousand a year each and every year for forty years, according to our pavement management plan, to address the roads here in the sewer. And even though we're putting five hundred, four hundred and fifty K this year, and escalating that by fifty each year on the out years, we're still way down below where we need to be realistically. We're doing a lot better than we were by, than the fifty thousand that we were throwing at once upon a time, but I, I, I understand that we're gonna have some bonds that we're gonna have to deal with, and we're gonna be watching as bonds fall off and putting more street bonds in as we have bonds that fall off, but we're gonna be having a lot of money tied up in bonds in the city for a long time to come.
Uh, that's a fair statement, and, and, and that's a conscious decision by city council, and really, that's what we need to do to, you know, fund these types of projects, it's, it's, you know. We could, we could raise rates or, or de- dedicate funding to a different fund to pay for these things, but it'd be like, you know, saving up for your house and then buying your house, we would, you know, be thirty, thirty years down the road before we do a project, so. These types of things, you know, it's, in general, that's, that's how we, that's how we have to fund them, um, you know, I think that debt capacity or that bond capacity, you know, we're not obligated by state statute as far as how high we can go, but city council needs to have an, an idea of where they feel comfortable, right?
Thirty million seemed like the number that was talked about at the last meeting.
Yep, so that's our total overall interfund loan bond capacity, or, or bonded debt that we have is about thirty million. Keep in mind, fifteen million of that is the wastewater treatment plant, that falls off in twenty twenty eight. Uh, so, that opens up a lot for the, the wastewater aspect of it. All the other departments, the electric, the, the water, they're positioned in a manner to do the stuff they need to do over the next ten years, right now.
Council member Fabulous.
And there's always opportunities, or different opportunities that can come around for additional funding from state, federal, right? That we can, because we have a plan, which I've said this over and over again, once you have a plan, if something comes around, we're ready for it.
Correct, yeah, and, and some of those, you know, the, the grants are, are going away, you know, you're getting more of PFA funding for certain things, you know, if it gets on that preferred, uh, project list. A lot of this, because, you know, we may have an opportunity on some of the county roads for that, but because they're local roads, we might not get that. But for, like, our water infrastructure projects, we're gonna look at getting on that PPL so that we can get some of that preferred PFA, uh, funding for that, maybe save a little bit of money, a percentage point or two, um, for that, so. Um, the, the straight up grant money, and Cory, you know, he's got a very good, um, kind of pulse on that realm. It's, it's going away, or has gone away, for the most part, um, really, the area that we can access are for, for trails and pedestrian improvement, parks, those things. There's still grant money out there with the, um, legacy amendment that's out there, um, but as far as getting money, grant money for street projects, it's, it, one, it's, it's, there aren't that, there really aren't any, and if there is, it's very competitive, so, but having a plan can only be helpful.
Is it fair to assume now that every street in the sewer's been looked at by the ultimate name, to determine what, uh, what the conditions of those roads are and what the life expectancy of the existing, existing roads and infrastructure would be?
Yeah, I, I would say it has, but I don't wanna take all the credit, I would say as a, as a city staff, we have, we have analyzed the city as a whole. Um, and we have, you know, with, with that, um, with that intent, then, you know, generated this program, and so thi- this is the greatest needs, you know, and, and essentially, in this ranking, you can, you can take those dates literally, that the earlier the date, the great, the greater the need. Um, but, but where this goes beyond that pavement management plan is that pavement management plan just stopped at the surface, so this is, this is wastewater, water, storm, electric, and street, so let's bring in all that in. Um, so obviously, if the street has, has, you know, maybe it's the, the most high need from a surface standpoint, um, what an awesome opportunity then to obviously be making improvements on the water wastewater, so this is that aggregate of, of need. Um, but, but, but yeah, through this exercise, and we have a whole another this, that, that isn't, you got, you know, has need but isn't programmed, and notably, you know, ones that, that, that maybe have, have need that's not worth documenting, so, um, I, I, I think that, that's a fair statement to some capacity, uh, that this plan is, 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 or has analyzed the city as a whole.
So, rather strange question, but just in case the city of the sewer decided we don't wanna put another dime towards roads for a while, we just said no. At what point would we be back to horse and buggy days as far as our road service? Because I mean, our streets are in pretty crappy condition right now, the ones that haven't been touched, obviously, like, you know, North Second or uh, South Four, you know, those types of streets that we put some attention to, and now with the Cassat twenty-two. But at some point, if we don't do anything and we don't spend no money, we're gonna be back to a point where everyone's gonna be needing front end allowances. When, when is that day?
Uh, it, yeah, with, without any certainty, you can't certainly predict, but I, I think, um, you know, we've, we've had a kind of ongoing case study with, with the failure of one twelve as a community, you know, we didn't, we didn't have, we didn't have jurisdiction and control of that road, or certainly the improvement. Um, notably, the county, the county will, will speak to that, you know, a, a turnback isn't really a cost benefit long term, they just inherited twelve, fifteen miles of road maintenance, we've been talking about that a lot tonight, but there's an, there's an acknowledgement and understanding that that, there was a need, there was a regional, local need to, to have, uh, improvement to one twelve, so we've been kind of living it. Um, you know, you drive that road right now, and it, it's, it's not real pleasurable, pleasurable to drive, um, lack of drainage, you know, those things, um, you know, they, they deter from, from the function, and, and I think we can agree that getting around places is, is kind of a minimal function that, um, you know, we expect to, uh, in our society today, so.
Thank you. So i- if I, you, you know, maybe the sticker shock has worn off, maybe not, but it's a big number, it's a huge number, right? Um, but I think, um, moving on, like, going through the areas and each year, what's being proposed as far as priorities go, and just kind of what that total looks like, like, I think we can go through that fairly quickly, because, you know, like, I alluded there, you have, you have all of these figures in your, um, in your packet that's been provided tonight. Ultimately, you'll see when we do the goals and priorities, you know, this is something that I would think I, I'm recommending is a priority and a goal to adopt for the, for the community, um, knowing farewell that, you know, the economy, um, goes down, you know? Our tax capacity decreases, we have less funds coming in, um, you know, those things, those outside factors will definitely influence the pace at which we can do this, so. It's not, you know, a guarantee that, hey, we're gonna do this all in ten years, it's gonna be really easy, i- it's gonna change, there's no doubt about it. It's really looking at the, 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 you know, basically the two years, you know, the two years and what we're actually gonna do, because there's a lot of legwork and engineering that goes into it, um, you know, for bonding, that type of thing, those two years are really important. So, um, just know that moving forward, but really, um, you know, I think we're gonna go through each of the, I think, five, five sections or five years or five projects that we're talking about.
Yeah, and, and to Mr. Minshay Kugel's, uh, point, you know, we really just wanted to, to, to then separate these out, um, again, these are based on a priority basis, but then just give a little view into what, what a true local project looks like, you know, Cassat twenty-two is very linear and, and very literal to the road designation. Once you branch off into local recons and, and, um, you know, residential, you know, improvements, you're more cognizant of the, of the area that you're improving. Um, to council member Fabulous's point, you're looking at drainage, you know, so a project in twenty twenty-three might be setting up the drainage improvement for twenty twenty-five. So having, you know, just a, a, a cognizant pulse on, on that, again, it's beyond just the road name or the, or the street surface, but there's the underground utilities and where those drainage pools are going to, so. Um, just some strategy into how we, we map this out, again, lots of fluidness to it, but, but there's, there is a little bit of a strategy in general intent with that, so twenty twenty-three, you see here, um, this is really that, that sixth, seventh street, notably some poor drainage, failing surface there as well. Um, we've had a, a, as a city, a verbal commitment to the Zion Church, um, their southern half of their, of their, uh, parking lot hasn't been improved uh, comparable to the north, because we've got failed storm sewer underneath that parking lot in, in Eastman, and so obviously, not wise to put a surface over a failed storm sewer, so just really prioritizing this is probably the next, uh, greatest local need beyond, beyond the county road system, so. That's twenty twenty-three, and then twenty twenty-five, you'll start to see now we're bringing back in that Cassat thirty-seven, um, or at least the, the southern portion of that, that fourth to fifth street, uh, neighborhood. Um, Swan Street provides some value drainage wise, being that there is no storm sewer really on fourth to fifth to speak of. Um, so that's, that's mapping out twenty twenty-five, and again, we're targeting right at five to six, and this is total project cost, so just to give you an idea, this is, this is construction plus a- all the effort necessary to deliver. Um, twenty twenty-seven then is the remainder of, of, uh, what would be North Fourth or, or that thirty-seven, um, and then bringing in, um, North Third and Vine Street with that as well. Kind of again, you know, grouping these, you know, within the community and, and hopefully helping with, with, with that feasibility construction, that access piece. Um, and then twenty twenty-nine, you know, we're getting out here now ways, so this is a little bit less group, but kind of the last of the, the ten year priorities, with bringing in South Third, um, and then some, some areas up in Hazel and, and, uh, that, that kind of little north corner there, so. And then, uh, the last slide is just a recap of that, uh, same, same map, and then just, you know, again, bringing up all those, uh, those individual kind of grouped projects back to that same tone. So, up, Mr. Mayor.
Council member Cory.
I got a real quick question, being you're talking about streets, uh, first of all, I just wanna preface it, uh, by saying, I, I kind of like, uh, your aggressive planning, Jasper, with the, uh, with the streets, and I, I think with the right, right bond juggling and right planning, I think this is very attainable. Um, and we've all seen this week how volatile the, uh, economy can be, and sometimes we've gotta see some of these opportunities when we can. But a- a- along the, uh, thinking of as far as repairing streets, one question I have real quick, has any consideration been given to Caucus Drive at all? By the cemetery?
I can speak to that, and yeah, we do have some, some projects that are gravel road, right, Caucus is one, Bowwright's another, we got Dopey, we got Woods Drive, those are all very difficult to manage during some of like the flood events that we have, um, in particular, uh, Dopey Lane. But yes, we, we have, I don't believe that there are any of those on here, the gravel, what I'd call gravel conversion projects, um, you know, we can do that if we, if we choose, there is a cost, I would say it's, there's, there's, there could be, there's potential significant costs to maintaining the gravel road network that we have. Um, you know, we don't have some of the larger equipment like a grader to do those things, so we end up contracting that out. You know, I don't think we have enough, um, of the gravel roads to justify the purchase of a quarter million dollar grader. But, um, we have talked about it internally, you won't see any of those on this list, um, you know, there's, you know, in, in those neighborhoods, you know, those people, um, they may be opposed to that, uh, you know, so really, we're looking at it as a dollar and cents kind of idea, is what does it cost to maintain those gravel roads and, you know, w- the potential neighborhood, there's been, you know, Caucus Drive requested it, Woods Drive requested it, so, um, you know, it'd be, we, we could add them if, if it's, to me, it, it would be a great priority to have, but some of the numbers that I've seen to, to convert those, they're, they're quite expensive. Um, so, it's one of those things, do we invest in, you know, gravel road, or do we maintain the, the road, the paved, paved roads that we have, so. If that's a priority for city council, we definitely can, can work, we can work any of these projects in there, but there's definitely a need.
I just, I just wanna keep it in our consideration, so, thank you.
So, that's the end of the streets and utility plan, obviously, this is gonna be an ongoing discussion. Um, you'll see during the goal and priorities, again, you know, that's, one of the goals is to adopt the plan. You know, a ten year plan is a, is a, you know, very high level plan, and we know that it'll change, but, you know, really, um, adopting some sort of plan, really a dollar amount is what we're looking for annually, um, so that we can plan accordingly, and, you know, maybe this spreads out a little bit, but this is, you know, again, aggressive in the sense that we have some bond, um, capacity opening up, and, you know, how we wanna utilize that is, is really up to city council, so. You know, with that, you know, you have a lot of information in front of you about this, you know, look at it, ask questions, we're here to, to help, but this will be an ongoing discussion throughout the, throughout twenty twenty.
Mr. Mayor, real quick, I have one sound, a very minor, a way that, uh, is it correct that Fourth Street South, Fourth Street North is County thirty-seven, do I have that right?
That is correct.
You're showing how, I'm showing you how difficult it is.
But, but not all of it, it's only when it, uh, when it leaves North Fifth Street. So the true thirty-seven is, is a block of bridge between Fourth and Fifth, um, that'd be an east-west block, and then it's North Fifth from there to where merges with North Fourth, and then North Fourth to Dakota, then it's thirty-seven, so it's a very awkward leg, but that's the true thirty-seven.
I just, I find it very confusing you use the numbers for county roads.
Sure, understood.
There's a way to kind of cross index, so, for the public, we're gonna get it after a while, but for the public to understand what we're talking about, so.
Well, in, in my defense, the, the breakout years are all reference to local, the local streets, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yep, that's what keyed it with me.
Sure, no, fair enough.
That's a very good point, you don't see those county road, I don't think county road thirty-seven sign anywhere on county road thirty-seven.
There's that one there.
So if we, uh, continue on, the next is the meter NISC project update, so the meter project, the swap out, and then the NISC is the, uh, utility billing software that just went live, um, beginning of February, March will be the first NISC bill that, that the community will see, so, very timely.
Thank you, uh, so water meter update, this was, I put this together, uh, before Foster called me at four o'clock today, the six four meters got done, so we are technically down to sixteen water meters to change out in the city, so, and, uh, the big thing is here, we have two non-metered sewer customers, so there are customers that have a private well, but city sewer, and they had never had a water meter before, those now have water meters installed on them. So, the list is getting small, uh, staff will be working, um, as soon as we get the frost out of the ground, um. Just have a few, I would say, less than five, people that are not being responsive, when the frost comes out of the ground, we will be more diligent on, uh, accessing their shut-off valves to get their attentions.
And if I may, I'll add a little bit to that, the reason why we're not is because we are afraid that if we do exercise these valves, one, they won't work, and then, then we're, then we'll be on the hook if they want it, you know, let's say it doesn't work and it, we close it, right? So then now we're digging through frost, um, so we're waiting till, wait till the spring in case that happens, which, you know, not many curb stops get exercised, uh, so. We're just kind of trying to mitigate that so we don't get caught in a situation where, you know, we're shutting off water and that valve breaks.
These are accounts that don't have multiple months of non-payment, are they?
Uh, I don't know, um, you know, really they haven't responded to the meter letters, there's, there's just a small handful of them, and some may be vacant, some may, you know, we don't know.
Some of these commercial meters, uh, the new meters have a different laylay, so we had to order, they call them spools, and then we had to get pipe, pipe company to come in and do some pipe work, and then obviously you're shutting down a commercial business, so that by the time you, we still don't have all the parts in for some of these commercial accounts yet, but we have the meters, just getting more parts, and then the scheduling aspect, so we're not shutting some of them down. Uh, electric meters, two thousand two hundred and fifty-seven total electric meters in our system, there is two hundred and twenty-eight remaining. Uh, we have, uh, the local electrician upgrading, some of the meter sockets are what they call the old A-frame, and they are not compatible with modern style meters. So, we are, this is part of the two thousand So we are, this is part of the 2,015.
It was, so, in, in 2017, we went out for an RFP to get these swapped out, we've been picking them off, you know, obviously we didn't get them done, or the contractor didn't get them done before the meter swap out, but, you know, now they will. So there's, I think 15 of those, right?
So 15 sites left for that. As you see there, we have 56 meters currently scheduled for March shipment, another 98 scheduled for May shipment, the final order of 86, which includes inventory, so we have inventory on hand, as in place, we have not received a estimated shipping date on that. So hoping that we have all electric meters, I'm hoping by July 1, I wouldn't hold my breath on that, I wouldn't hold anybody else's breath on that. The NISC conversion update, first bill, they're planning to run Wednesday. I had NISC staff in-house assisting city staff, I'm giving the final stuff, set up 2,120 total accounts in NISC. As of Thursday, we had 347 people sign up for e-bill accounts, which is great, they were, and they did receive the $10 account credit for going to the paperless system. So that's 236 e-bill customers and 95 paperless accounts. So yes, tell your people, friends, neighbors, relatives, let them get on, get online, sign up for the paperless billing so they can get the $10 account credit on their account. Nice thing on the NISC portal with the Smart Hub, there's multiple ways to pay, there's the credit card, checking account, now you can do one, you can do a one-time payment with the credit card or checking, so you don't have to set up a personal account, username, password, all that, you can just do it one time, and it's done. If you want to call in, they have an interactive voice system that you can call in, enter your stuff over the phone, and then you're done with that. You can come into City Hall here, cash credit card checks, you can drop it off out in the mail up or out in our Dropbox, you can mail it in, a lot of ways to, for, to get payment here, and I believe American Express should be working sometime this week, so then we should be able to take pretty much all credit cards. I just put up here a couple screenshots of the Smart Hub, Smart Hub is up and running, so if you do get registered for your account on the Smart Hub, you can get in, there's items, you can see your usage, you can see your balance due, you can go in and see, once you, if you have a new, I call them the smart meter, or a smart electric meter, smart water meter, then you can actually get in to see your daily hourly usages. Nice slide. That, these are screenshots off a, I believe it is a registered Google account of the Smart Hub, where you can actually see your hourly, daily, average usage, your neighborhood weather, a lot of good information there. This is where you can also set up your personal alarms for that account. So if you are on a budget, if you are worried about a water leak, you can set those parameters in there, and it will notify you.
How does NISC update staff to know that you have customers that are delinquent by X number of months? Is that, is there a report generator, or how does that work?
Yeah, it's all built in, so we have an utility billing coordinator that looks at all of that, that's really tuned into that aspect. So, you know, and there, there's a bill run, you know, that wants delinquent, what you're going to see in the near future is, we're going to talk about a, a shut-off policy. Right now, what we have is the policy is, you can run your bill up as much as you want, it's just if you don't pay by September, it gets certified to your tax roll. You know, landlords do not like that because then, you know, if their tenant's not paying the bill, it gets certified to their taxes, so, and we've, we've taken the position that we, we want our landlords to have tenants that are paying their utility bills because, you know, that's, that's our business that we can make sure that we get paid for. So in, in the near future, you'll be looking at a, a potential policy that allows us to disconnect electricity, if we want to go down that route, to kind of facilitate people coming in and paying for their delinquent bills. So we could go down a different, different path than what we're going, this was most recently changed in 2014, I believe 2015, where we went to this certification. We do recapture that at a pretty good rate, it's just you'll see things like $250,000 in delinquent utility bills that get certified annually. You know, we might have to wait five years to get that paid back, if at all, where if you shut that power off, they're going to be coming in likely and to pay their bill because they need electricity to live. You know, so it's, it's a policy decision by City Council as far as which route we want to go, we can evaluate both and, and we'll do what we, you know, what we're directed to do, so we'll, we'll talk about.
And to declare our landlords are paying, they'll have access to NISC syllable, whether or not their tenants are paying?
Yes, and they always have, so they've always had that access where, you know, if they're actively managing their, their tenant, you know, the landlord actually gives the tenant permission to view the bill, because the tenant, or the landlord's the actual responsible party. So they can always go in, and they could have always went in to, to Tyler and look at the, what, what their tenants are paying or if they're not paying. So they've always had that, you know, we hope that this is easier for them to use and we want them to use it, but, you know, as far as that disconnect policy, we'll be looking at something in the near future.
Councilmember Fabrice?
Yeah. Is there a handout or, or pamphlet or something about the meters and this system? Because I was talking to the, my insurance provider, the company, and they're interested in it on the idea that it's like a 24-hour monitoring service like ADP is, but for your, for your utilities, and on the idea of like what I had with 77,000 gallons of water go through, for them, it's a big savings aspect.
If not, we could throw something together, I made a note, that does transition, and maybe Rich is thinking about this already, but we've already had some success stories with somebody's water softener being locked up into whatever.
Rooftop sprinkler.
One small, you know.
We've had two softeners get stuck in backlash, flowing anywhere from 250 to 300 gallons an hour. So, you know, we've been able to catch those. Yes, we've been talking internally about how to get this across better, is it, make a little video to actually show the steps to do stuff, and, you know, a handout's great, but, you know, we're, we're, we are trying to figure out how the best way to get across, because we, we do receive calls daily, and people having problems getting signed up for a Smart Hub. So we keep trying to figure out how to make it more easy for the customer.
Insurance is interesting though, so.
Anybody have any questions regarding the meter and the NISC project update? Does anybody need to take the recess?
Yeah.
Go ahead and entertain a motion for a $5 recess. Someone, is there a second?
...resumed from our recess.
Hi, everyone.
Is there a second?
Second.
All favorable.
Hi.
Council's now back in full session. Next item on the dock is five Charlie, City Attorney Discussion, City Administrator Krugel.
No. Actually, we're on, I believe, we're on the Parks Open Space Trail System. This is still part of the public services. This is just, I'm taking this on.
Okay, I'm sorry.
So, I've been kind of the, myself and TJ have been the project leads on this, so, I will go through this.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
I was a bit of my last.
We'll get there. I'm gonna go through this pretty quickly. There's a lot of information here. I just wanna showcase a few parts of it, take a look at it. What I'm trying to lay the groundwork for is this is just kind of what we consider a final plan. There's been some revisions to it from when RPAC looked at it. We got some feedback from RPAC and we've incorporated those things into this plan, some additional feedback from staff. But really, you know, the areas that I'm focused on and think are really important that will eventually be amended to the comprehensive plan are the trail system plan. That's really the component that, that we're gonna look at swapping out. So, but the other thing that I'll focus on mostly is, is the, you know, some of the master planning for some of the parks that we potentially could do. And again, you know, this is all things that we should, you know, we have the budget for. The beauty of parks is that there are some grants available. And if we have a plan, there's potential there that we could receive some grand dollars. Now, the way that the grant system is set up for this is they really put a lot of points as far as when they score on regional significance. It's difficult for us to indicate that we have regional significance because there aren't many things that we're connected to, you know. We could, this is identified in the plan. It's the Nye Center, Rush, Rush River, State Park, you know, and there's some county parks down by some of the lakes in La Sure County that we could potentially be connected to, but we're not right now. So, that might be the challenge with, with the park aspect. Trails, though, I think we're gonna try to do as much as we can once we have a plan adopted to, to get some grant funding. So, I will fly through this. You have the full plan in front of you. You know, it's a very comprehensive plan. It really looks at what the process was to, to go through this. We commissioned this back in 2019. We have an assessment of need, you know, we have parks and we have, you know, pretty small budgets to maintain our parks. We haven't really actively reinvested in the parks. We started doing that through some of our capital planning. Kind of talks about the demographic spread that we have in the community. We did some community engagement exercises where we, at last year's Giant Celebration. This, this that you're seeing on here right now is the social pinpoint where people could go online for a certain amount of time and indicate areas that they think are areas that we should invest in, some new ideas, things like that. All this stuff was incorporated into, to the final plan. And what you're basically seeing, we'll get there, is basically every park laid out, what we have going on right now and what some of the recommendations are to move forward in the future. And we focused on a few of the parks to actually develop what are considered kind of high-level master plans for those. So, I will try to get to the vision, you know, really tying this directly to the comprehensive plan. This is a major component. You'll see it in our goal-setting exercise that, you know, parks and recreation aspect is, is a high priority. And then this is the actual plan. It goes through the different parks, kind of tells you what kind of parks they are, you know, if they're a regional park, if they're a neighborhood park, that type of thing. This map, I think, is really important. It looks at the dispersments of the parks throughout the community. You'll see some things that say, well, if we wanna do a new park, where should we put it? This kind of map kind of shows you, you know, access to our existing park system that we have. And our PA, you'll see that referenced numerous times, National Recreation and Park Association. They're kind of the standard, or they set the standards for some of these things as far as looking at what we have. We've looked at some of the communities around us as far as what we have for parks and if we're in tune. Laundsdale is a pretty, you know, accurate size and population for what we have and where in general, where we're in, in that trend of, of that comparable city.
Is that an organization that requires membership by the cities and are we a member?
We are a member, yes. So, I think we have at least two members within our staff that are members of this. They have local organizations, even one called SMURPA, Southern Minnesota Recreation and Park Association. So, you know, all these crazy acronyms, but, you know, I, I know that we have at least two members that are members, or that are members of that group, that are P A and SMURPA. It's a good group. I used to be a member of it when I was in, more in the parks realm. And, you know, really, it's a great networking opportunity because, you know, parks are expensive, nobody wants to, you know, fund them, or not nobody, but they don't really generally get as much funding as they probably need to be really good. So, they have really good creative answers to some of the problems that most cities see. We're looking at, and you can see, this is from a PDF, transitioned into a PowerPoint. Some of the formatting gets a little wonky. But, so really, we look at what the grading of the parks are, and this is, you know, in general, our highest rated park is our newest park, the La Sure Dog Park, got a pretty high rating. Yeah, see, these numbers are a little jumbled up, but really, you can look at that and say, oh, there's some, there's some need in the community to invest in some of the parks to make them a little bit better. The one that I'm gonna focus on mostly is probably what I think is the staff's highest priority as far as looking at doing some things, and it's in American Legion Park. So, you know, looking at the inventory, they go into each individual park that we have. So, American Legion Park is one that we have. It's really probably our most highly-used park, it's in the center of town. We basically centered Giant Celebration around it. You know, there's a lot of people that are well-connected to it, can walk to it, can utilize it, so we wanna make sure we access that, or create access to that for as many people as we can. There's a lot of stuff going on there right now, you know, what we're, what we attempt to do in some of this stuff, and I'll jump right into what the, what the master plan area is looking at. And this, again, you know, is something that we can strive for. There is some pretty expensive amenities in here, but really, having a plan and picking off some of those things and prioritizing it is something that RPAC, I think, will do a great job of doing. And then really, it's up to, up to staff to, to come up with creative financing, some of these things, you know, we're gonna go out for corporate sponsorships on it. But just in general, so American Legion Park, the master plan, you can see kind of a layout change, kind of set up for community events, the civic lawn area is what we call it, to have kind of, you know, the Giant Celebration. There's some things that are in here that maybe you aren't too aware of, but an inclusive playground, what that is, is a playground that is accessible to basically anybody, you know, if, if you're, if you're handicapped, if you're in a wheelchair, if you have autism, there's things that are there that can benefit you. It's really all-inclusive and, and it's really a neat idea. And the idea with an inclusive playground is that it would have some sort of regional pull because not everybody has them, because they're very, they're, they're, frankly, expensive to do. But there are grants out there. TJ in the crowd, he's, he's got some great playground equipment contacts that are always telling us that they have grant money available and they want to, you know, have us access that. So, we're gonna go at it at, you know, with everything that we can to try to get this done for as cost-effective as possible for the community. But you'll see things in here like the inclusive playground, the splash pad, the outdoor hockey rink. You'll see there's, the, the plan is to expand it to a full-size rink and then eventually cover it with an open-air kind of roof system. And to be able to hold an event or a hockey game out there would be, would be kind of deep for the community. Covering it like that would also help us maintain the ice a little bit better, you know, you don't have the ultraviolet rays from the sun, reflection of the boards that really kind of heat up that ice. And really, you can use it to, you know, kind of as a second sheet of ice without actually building a second sheet of ice, which if you ask the local hockey groups, you know, that could be beneficial, especially if you're holding an event like that just happened here on the weekend, the Mike Jamboree, you know, they could utilize that space to, to potentially have more teams come into town. So, a little bit of an expansion of the parking lot, you'll see down over by Bruce Frankfield, one of the things was a Ninja Warrior course and a skate park. Those are two things that came from the community input sessions. You know, Jordan, you know, if you haven't checked it out, I believe Jordan has a Ninja Warrior course, you can go check it out and see if it's something that, you know, you person by age try to get injured doing. But, you know, there's, there's things that we're trying to, you know, really focus on different age groups in the community. It's easy for, to, to do something for, you know, infant, five-year-old, they're gonna play on some equipment, but as you get into that kind of, you know, young child, the five to fifteen range, you know, it's, it's difficult to find some things that, that, you know, they find interesting that they wanna do. So, you'll see some of those things throughout the plan. But really, you know, you can see it's kind of a reconfiguration of the park. One of the other major components is to, to move the memorial closer to that intersection so it's more visible. You know, a lot of, lot of memorials that you see in communities are in areas where you can drive by and you can see it and it's prominent. Ours is kind of tucked away a little bit. So, you know, kind of reconfiguring that whole layout of the, of the park, you know, really in connecting it to the trail network that we have right now. Some of that work that we have going on with Asa Twenty Two, you know, down Elmwood, we're really connecting this park as part of that. So, it's a, it's a good thing. So, this is just one of the, one of the three areas or three parks that they, that, some kind of high-level master planning exercises were conducted on. You know, the next step, if this is adopted, is really to look at RPAC and say, you know, RPAC, talk about what is a priority, what should we look to do as far as the CIP goes and recommend something to city council. And then it's staff's, staff's duty to make this, you know, happen at the most cost-effective level that we can. So, any questions about Legion Park or what, what the kind of vision is for that? You might say, oh, it's, it's, it's significant, but it's not significant because there's a playground there, there's already some open space, but, you know, it really lays it out nicely to, to be able to host events there and accommodate some additional parking. All right. Bruce Frankfield, you know, this again goes through all of the parks. Mayo Park, now this is another one that we did kind of a master plan thing on, knowing that the, the park floods a lot, right? So, we're going through some, some things with FEMA right now. And really, you can see everything that, you know, the shelter that was in the floodplain or that's in the floodplain right now would be moved. We're applying for and hopefully receiving mitigation money to help with that process. So, that might be something that we can do fairly quickly here in Mayo Park. But, you know, really looking at Mayo Park, you know, having it be this portion of it, at least be kind of, kind of a native area that is kind of a passive use, I'd call it. You'll see that the, the vision in, I believe, nineteen fifty-six was for this whole area to be campgrounds. Well, there's been quite a bit of change as far as floodplains go and frequency of flooding, so that, that can't happen, but we still wanna kind of honor that idea. And you'll see, you know, this is the existing space that we have. We'd say, oh, let's put in some campsites here for people to use, but really, overall the plan for this, if it becomes available, would, would be to expand to the north and have that section that's completely under the floodplain actually be camping. Now, there's two parcels there that are privately owned that businesses are run on now. The idea would be, well, we've identified them. If they do ever go up for sale, we can talk about it and see if we wanna purchase it. That's one option. The other option would be to, you know, actively enter into option agreements so that we have first right of refusal on those if we wanna move that route. But again, it's, you know, it's, it's, it's an investment in that park, and if we wanna do that, this would be, you know, looking at that for camping. Overall, there's some land along the, the highway basically that could serve as kind of some, some nature hiking areas, some off-road mountain bike trails, things like that, that could be incorporated. Most of that is, is private as well. So, it's just to kind of keep an eye on this property, and if properties do come up for sale, we can, we can have that conversation at city council. You know, and really, this would connect with the Wayside Rest, which would be a, you know, a good thing some people would have. There is a trail network. I don't know if everybody's aware of that, a little trail network up there on the Wayside Rest, too, that we could tie into. This goes into neighborhood parks, Cedar Ridge Trail, Joey Galanderson, special use parks, Dog Park, our newest park. You know, I drove by there on Sunday and I think it was about eleven o'clock, and there were like four cars sitting there and people running around in the snow because it's such a nice day, but it's, it's unbelievable how well-received it's been and, you know, I think people really, really cherish it and it's, I think it's been a good, I've, I've received way more compliments and, and kudos for it than I've received, you know, people saying there's issues going on there. So, it's a good deal and, and I think it's an asset to the community. There really isn't much to do there except, you know, if we wanna enhance it some way, we can. Mother's Louise, this is kind of our central location for the Holiday Parade. It's a small park, but it's right in the middle of our downtown. It's a good park, really, to continue to, to use it as kind of that staging area for, for these, these special events. Pierre La Sure, also known as Fountain Park. Overall, you know, this is also a very small park that's very underutilized. We call it a turny Miller Park because they kind of take care of it sometimes and plant flowers and things like that, Miller Flooring that's right next door to it. You know, it's an entrance to our, to our city, you know. There's, there's some ideas that you can have, you know, that be a trail hub or have some trail information about what you can do, you know, in the community. But really, it's, you drive up that hill and you see that park right there, there's, there's maybe an opportunity there to, to do some marketing for the community and welcome people into it. Natural parks, you know, river parks, this is a challenge. This is, you know, personally, one of my favorite parks when it's not flooded. It's, it's great. I mean, it's a, it's a great area to go walk around in the, in that woods because there's, you know, the landscape is always changing. But, you know, basically, since I've, since I've started here, it's been flooded over fifty percent of the time. So, it's something that, you know, we wanna keep an eye on, but, you know, it also could be an asset. We did look at doing some things out here, too, as far as master plan. We've identified potentially some primitive campsites along, along the river with a trail network going through there. This would be, you know, phase one of this, very low cost, be able to, you know, have campsites. And what that is, is basically if anybody's ever been to the Boundary Waters canoe area, you know, a, a fire ring and a picnic table or something like that. We'd obviously have to pick those up when, you know, it's not, or before it floods. But to be able to have something, I think it'd be pretty well-received in the community because, you know, quite, we have, we have, we have a great fishing community. There's people that fish the river all the time, you know, and it's, it'd be easy access for somebody to get to. And, you know, the idea is it's close to, to resources, so, you know, if you have an emergency, you know, our police department's real close, you know, that trail would be accessible using a vehicle. So, you know, I'm, I'm really excited about this, but I'm also, you know, realistic in the sense that this is, this has been flooding a lot lately. You know, they came up with an area to, to be able to do some of these things. If you look at historic photos, you know, some of these things are wide open, they're, it's, this used to be farmed historically. So, you know, overall, overall, the plan includes some additional parking and some additional use over there, but really, to me, it's a great plan, but until, you know, it doesn't flood frequently, you know, I think it's kind of, at, at most, the primitive campsites would be good and a low cost and to implement. Looking at some open spaces, really, I wanted to touch base on the master plans. Take a look at this. I'll send a digital copy to everybody, so, I think it's originally made on eight and a half, or eleven by seventeen, so you have eight and a half by eleven. Some of the words might get small. I'll send out a, a digital copy of this for you to review. But, the next touch point, and it may be March, it might, well, it might be March ninth or the first meeting in April, WSB, the group that put this together, will come and present it to city council, will look to adopt it, and then after we, after we potentially adopt it, there are some things out here that would, we'd like to amend the comprehensive plan. And I'll touch, I haven't touched on the, on the trail system. So, just kind of show what the, the network that we have. We have Smolville Trail, kind of, we have, so, just so everybody's aware, we're kind of at the beginning and end of three major trails that the state has identified. So, La Sure is, could be significant in the, in the state trail system if they actually get built, because we're kind of at this, you know, intersection of, of three different trails, which is great, but we're also at the end of each one of these trails, so we might be the last ones to, to, to get it done. So, but we have been identified on, on multiple state trail plans. Proposed trails, let's see, I don't think, appears that the, that the map in here is something jumbled up, but the one that you have in paper and the one that'll be digital, you'll be able to see the actual trail plan. It looks a little bit different than what we have right now, basically creating a loop from Elmwood over to Ottawa Road, up Ottawa Road and back into town, so that you could potentially have, you know, a circular route that somebody could walk. That's, I think about three miles, so.
Down one fifteen.
Yep, one fifteen and then over, you know, we looked at a route potentially along the airport road, there's some challenges there, but really, one fifteen over to Ottawa. The county's made it very clear they're not gonna invest in trails on one fifteen, so that would all be us, but, you know, that's kind of the idea is that we'd have a loop system. You know, if somebody wanted to go on a loop, you wanna do a five K, you know, you'd have, you won't be doubling back or going on city streets, you'd have a trail system to be able to use. These are all long-term ideas, not something that'll happen tomorrow, but it's, it's a plan that we can, we can work towards. That's about it as far as the plan goes. There's a lot there. So, look at it. There will be another touch point. But I just wanted to get the final draft out to city council to look at before we, we talk about it at a future council meeting. Are there any questions? Lot of information, RPAC, you know, looked at it. I think it took a little bit more time to go through it with RPAC. We received some comments, as I mentioned, those have been incorporated. Yeah, it's, it's pretty straightforward and really, I'm excited for, for having a plan that we can work towards because, you know, it's something that I think new homeowners or existing homeowners are, you know, looking for amenities. They, they wanna, that's part of, part of the benefit to living in a community is, you know, is there stuff for me? You know, and that park system is, is kind of the, the go-to for a lot of residents.
Okay. Mark, what's your number solid?
Jasper, this is not about the parks, but as part of the public services, a year ago when we were in mediation with SMURPA, there was an optimization study that was given to us through the mediation process. Where are we at with that?
So, staff is working with them. It's a, I think it's a private organization and VCA is commissioned to work with us to do it. So, it's kind of started, but they're gonna be gathering information. But yeah, that's a good point, Public Services Director, Chair, kind of talk about a future update sometime about that because it's, you know, I'm interested in, in those findings as well. Thank you. But yeah.
Move on now to five Charlie, which is the City Attorney Discussion, City Administrator Krugel.
Thank you very much. So, this agenda item is intended to kind of give an update to council as far as where we're going internally with some legal counsel. You've probably seen that through the EDA, we've started using outside legal counsel for these specific land use and zoning issues that have come up. I think, in my opinion, there's been some pretty significant benefit to this, you know, related to some review of some purchase agreements, just develop, not development agreements, but yeah, basically purchase agreements. There's been some good stuff that's come from it that, you know, I think that having an attorney that has some really expertise in those areas has a benefit. Now, we, we pay a little bit more for that, but I think that in the short term, the, the benefit that I've seen has been pretty good. The reason why this is brought up is, you know, we have a, we have a current contract with Anderson Scoobits through 2020. That's just basically a fee agreement talking about what the expectations are for fees and, and whatnot. The city council and city staff, we can use whatever legal counsel we feel appropriate for whatever action we feel appropriate. And we can modify that agreement whenever we want. The question, just to talk about it, obviously, this is coming to an end, we can modify it whenever we want. You know, do we want to seek direction? We don't have to take action tonight, you know, we can just have a general conversation about it, but if we wanna look at additional kind of general counsel legal services other than Anderson Scoobits or including Anderson and Scoobits, you know, we could go down that route going through an RFQ, so Request for Qualifications, and looking at that, you know, basically what that would be is city council, interview legal counsel and decide who they would like to go with in the future. So, you know, I think there's been, you know, obviously, some changes at Anderson Scoobits. Todd Corial ended up working and moving on and getting a job for a county. So, it's really, you know, how comfortable the city council feel, do we wanna explore this other option? And, and, you know, what's the timeline that we wanna look at this, if we wanna look at it at all? You know, obviously, it's, it's, it's fairly sensitive. I think I lost my mic. In a sense, Anderson Scoobits has been our, our legal counsel for quite some time, basically forever, and, you know, they, they handle general legal services and prosecution. So, you know, that's the bill you see every month or so, as far as, you know, and most of it, I'd say ninety-five percent of it's prosecution. The other five percent is, you know, EDA, or not EDA, but land use, zoning, that type of thing, and that's, that kind of transitioned already out of it. But it's really, you know, general legal services for the city council as a whole, you know, what's the direction you, you want staff to proceed? So, I'll entertain any questions. It's intended to just be a discussion, and if, you know, we don't wanna do anything differently, just know that, you know, staff is analyzing this type of thing now pretty closely, and if we feel that, you know, somebody should be brought in to do some open meeting law, you know, I like to do an open meeting law sometimes during the retreat, but open meeting law, refresher course, you know, I might go out and get a different attorney and say, come on in, you know, and perform that if I think they're gonna do a good job. So, there's a bunch of different approaches. You could do kind of a cafeteria-style, you know, approach with your So, there's a bunch of different approaches, you could do kind of a cafeteria style, you know, approach with your legal counsel. But really, there should be somebody that, you know, if you really need, you know, general legal services, that should be designated, I, I feel, um, by the city council. So, I'll entertain any direction, any way we wanna go with this. Um, and, you know, the, you know, if we do wanna go down the route of looking at and, and basically interviewing legal counsel, you know, I have an RFQ that, uh, that I've got from another city, pretty straightforward, um, lays out, you know, the basic things that you need to know in order to make a good decision, but really, it comes to, you know, that interview process, uh, at a city council meeting.
Any questions? Councilmember Fabelis.
In regards to Murpuck, um, having the right attorney with putting together, uh, a, uh, joint powers agreement would have been extremely helpful for us that were on that team. Um, and the problems that we continue to run into time and time and time again with that. Um, and it, it wasn't, it wasn't the legal document that was well thought out. And, uh, it doesn't seem as though it was argued out very heavily only ten years ago. We found how different it was working with another legal team and what they had to go through with us, with, um, our permit. And going against, uh, MPCA. Um, I just, you know, there are certain things that you do in a city that requires a level that is higher from an attorney's office, that, that's what they do, is work with cities in these types of things.
Time is, uh, man.
Councilmember Crump.
Two examples to support what councilman Fabelis just said. As we deal with the service area territory for electricity, I happened to have been part of a meeting with an attorney that, uh, was brought in by our city administrator, we need that expertise. You, you can't do that without somebody that specializes in that. The other was the zoning appeal that we had recently. Those things need to have special counsel. My concern, Mr. City Administrator, is if we have a general agreement with Anderson Scoobits and that's in writing and the council has approved it, don't we need something that allows the city administrator, uh, perhaps the community services or community development director to employ others? Do we have to give you that permission? Should we perhaps give you a, a kind of a, I don't wanna use the term.
Blank check.
Yeah, I'm not gonna use the term blank check, I'm trying to think of another term, but, but an open-ended ability to do that, knowing that we ultimately approve the bills. But I really think we need to have that sort of more under control, that's all I'm, I'm asking the question.
Yeah, and I can answer that.
For whatever reason, this one isn't working either.
Your time is up, Mr. City Administrator, that's why.
So, in general, the way I, the way I interpret this, and this is what I think it was intended, was it's a fee agreement, it outlines some services. Um, you know, it's not exclusive rights to every legal, legal thing that we're doing on. If you would feel more comfortable, you know, formalizing it or changing the agreement, you know, we can modify it. And the agreement says we can modify it with written notice whenever we want. So, it's, it's something that, that in twenty seventeen, I pushed because I wanted something, right? And we never had anything, I don't think there was ever an agreement that I found for legal services, it was just we used, you know, we used whatever we used. So, i- it's all up to city council, right now, the way that I'm interpreting it, it's a fee schedule. Um, you know, there are some, some terms in it as far as what they'll do, like, you know, be present at city council meetings, we've kind of modified that a little bit by saying that, well, we're gonna request when you, you are attending these meetings. So, you know, we can deviate from it, you know, I think if we go down the RFQ route, that would be something we just, we'd let them know and we, we, and I, I would say offer them to, you know, obviously participate in it. Um, you know, just to re-elaborate on the RFQ, you know, really, I think we're talking about two different services. We're talking about prosecution services, they're kind of in this one group, and then general legal counsel for, for the city. Um, so I mean, it'd be, you know, I would recommend if we would go down that route, is we would have two RFQs for those two separate things. Because, um, you know, for example, the, the group that represented Murpuck, you know, they're located in St. Paul. They might not be really cued into doing prosecution services, so I don't think it's fair to group those all together. Um, and, you know, like I, like I said before, you know, ninety-five percent of the, of the invoices that come through are prosecution-related. So there's, there's that aspect of it. But, you know, if we wanna, it, it depends on the route that we wanna go, and, you know, I think we have to, uh, be courteous of our current legal counsel, just keep them in the loop, you know, really just communicate with them as far as the route that, that, that we as a city wanna go.
Sorry, councilmember Fabelis.
One of the other aspects of, of the legal team that, that we were working with, uh, is the responsibility on, on our, on, on Murpuck to, uh, know what was gonna be on our agenda, know what our discussions were gonna be like, and if we needed attorney-client privilege discussions. Which there were a number of them towards the end of this. But, um, uh, that was, most of that was done, um, over the phone. So all of us, we would be there, the attorney would call in, it wasn't driving out there to, to sit there through an entire meeting or anything like that. It was courteous to us about what time we needed and, you know, uh, again, with them as well. So we weren't running up bills and so on. Um, I don't know that, that the discussions that we've had, um, at city council over things required having an attorney here all the time, and it's not like we don't know what's gonna be on our, on our agendas.
Yeah, I, I definitely hear everything that we're talking about here. Uh, if you have an issue where you're gonna be needing brain surgery, you're certainly not gonna go to a pediatrician. Uh, you have to have the expertise that is gonna benefit both city councils and all the staff. And, uh, a general practitioner in this case is probably good for the prosecutorial type work as well as, um, you know, general items, but when you talk about things like land use type issues or, to your point regarding something like, uh, mediation with MPCA, I think that requires an expertise that a general practitioner, practitioner, if that's a proper term in the legal world, uh, would have necessarily. Uh, they probably have studied it at some point, just like every doctor has gone through the rotations, but doesn't necessarily mean they're experts and everything. So, I think that what we do is, uh, we leave it up to staff to see how, I think we already have an arrangement already set with some land use zoning, uh, already with Mike. Uh, we already have stuff going out with Scoobits and Anderson and Scoobits right now. And, uh, I think we're done with what we need regarding the MMPA or the, uh, Murpuck stuff at this point. So, quite frankly, I think it's just see what staff needs, and when it comes to time, you bring it to our attention and we go from there. Is that kind of like what you're leaning towards?
Yeah, I, so, the general legal counsel aspect of it, I think is a, is more of a city council decision, and it should be directed by city council. Um, you know, the land use zoning with Mike Corry, I think we were, you know, the one month we've been working with him or six weeks, you know, we're generally pretty happy with him. We wish his bill wouldn't be so high, but it's, you know, it's, it's kind of the nature of it, and we hope that that doesn't happen every month. Um, but, you know, the prosecution aspect, and, you know, I think that from, I'd rely on the police chief to let me know his input about, you know, how's the prosecution going, is that even something we wanna, you know, talk about? Or is it just, you know, general legal services, which really carved out of the budget is a, a pretty small component? But really, it's, you know, making sure that we can address any situation, you know, and if we feel confident in our legal counsel to be able to do that as they, as they, as it comes up, we just don't know what that will be. Um, you know, and in general, um, you know, a group like, you know, this isn't a, a validation for it, but, you know, a group like Flaherty and Hood, they have other entities like CGMC, they're running these things and they're really in tune with, with the, with the legislative changes that are occurring, um, you know, and that affect us, you know, could affect us quite a bit. So, you know, looking at that as far as, you know, having that general, you know, if we're going down the route of having specific, multiple specific attorney or multiple attorneys versus specific areas, yeah, I would say that, that would be a, a good idea. I think really Anderson and Scoobits, they, they strive in that prosecution, they do a great job. Um, you know, i- if it's my opinion, I think that it would be a bad exercise for city council to engage in and, and talk about, you know, general legal counsel services and see what's out there. Because, you know, I think about the local business and, you know, really, it's, it wouldn't affect that local business much. You know, and I think they do a good job of the, of the prosecution spot or stuff. But, um, you know, looking at some of these big picture things, you know, to ask some of these questions, you know, not to say that our, our current legal counsel couldn't do it, but, you know, I think that the time may be better served, you know, for prosecution. So, it's really up to, up to city council as far as that general legal counsel know that I'm gonna be looking at. And if there's like a specific, you know, kind of obscure area, I'm gonna reach out to my network and, and see if anybody's has an attorney that they've worked with for that. That's very similar to what happened for the electric service territory, you know, reaching out to, um, cohorts in MMPA and elsewhere around the region as far as electric stuff go, goes, you know, you know, who do we, you know, and they all said the same person, so that's who we, we engage with, so. You know, the general legal cer, legal counsel for a city council, I would say leave it up, leave it up to the, the body here and, and give me direction as far as what that would look like. Um, you know, if we're just looking at general legal services, you know, what I would do is bring an RFQ to city council, you look at it, you approve it, go out, uh, a time period, look at it, and interview, you know, potential, um, legal services for that. So, it, it's really up to you to direction, but, uh, that would be the process.
Well, I think also in regards to an RFQ, you may wanna think about that regarding land use, uh, representation as well. You think that, uh, maybe the power liability perhaps might be too high, for example? Maybe we shop wrong, that, that would be your calls, city administrator, I would think.
Yeah, and I, we hope that these, uh, land use zoning things don't pop up as frequently as they have in the last month. But you never know, um, and, you know, really, legal counsel, it's all, you know, a lot of it's what you feel comfortable with and what you, um, you know, feel the ability of the attorney is. And really, you know, that attorney needs to invest in the community and understand what's going on here too. So, there's already been some of that investment, I, yeah, I mean, we'll definitely keep it under consideration if, if we think it's, it's, it'd be beneficial if we could go down that road.
Well, we allocated a certain amount of money for legal representation as a city for its twenty twenty budget. I guess the question really is at this point, because we've had to go outside of networks, so to say, uh, do we have enough money currently within the budget? Would we have to modify the budget to go ahead and accommodate, uh, going out of network and getting the land use expertise, for example?
Yeah, so, so far, we're within budget, but it's only, you know.
March, March.
So, uh, you know, we'll definitely keep it posted as far as that goes. Really, the area of concern for me would be that, uh, you know, we have a planning and zoning budget line item, and in there, we have legal services. And in there, I think we budgeted fifteen thousand dollars this year for that, because last year, we expended more because we had more stuff going on. It's kind of a, a temperature gauge of what is going on, because we don't, we don't know a lot of times what to expect that next year. But we can use the previous year to kind of get an estimate. That's what we did for twenty twenty, um, from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty. You know, we already went through, you know, sixty-five hundred dollars of that fifteen thousand dollar budget, you know, within the first quarter.
Well, if I may, that kind of investment is sometimes very important. Because if you don't do that correctly, you wind up in court where the cost is four times that much. Good, I, I, I'm not doing that with any expertise in cost, I'm perhaps being a little bit exaggeration. But the bottom line is, it strikes me that we should have local representation for prosecution and general legal matters, which I don't think we need to go out and ask anybody else to give us proposals. You've got somebody local, frankly, there's not a whole lot of others in town who would, are able or willing. There's not that many attorneys in town, okay? So, that's easy, but the other question I still have is for these others where we're going out and, and we'll call them using expertise, we're going to people with particular expertise, it strikes me that the council should either have the full authority or give the authority to the staff to be able to handle that, and that would be a simple motion, resolution, whatever it is. And I, I, to keep it in order, that's what we should do. So, Mr. City Administrator, you asked for our opinion, that would be the approach that I would recommend that we begin to think about. We're not deciding anything tonight, this is a working session. But I would favor using expertise. I'll give you another example that, that probably will never come up with our local police department, but having been at a Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities meeting where they talked about, uh, police officers who claim disability, there's some expertise needed when you represent the city when a police officer claims disability. I'm not saying they're crooked or the police officers do anything wrong, but there's a certain level of expertise that you need. Because of the way rulings are going administratively when you go before an administrative law judge, you gotta know what you're doing. And, and our, you just take somebody with the expertise, that's, that's a simple story. And I don't want our police officer to think I'm accusing anybody of anything, or ever would. I just know from a general picture, that's one of the examples of the state exists.
Councilmember Fabelis.
Um, councilman, councilmember Crump, um, comments, is it, is it your thought that, uh, they have the authority to seek out two or three different, um, attorneys in that expertise and then come back to city council and say, this is what we found, this is where we're happy with, and that's what we would, we'll work with? Are you giving them the authority to just pick somebody and run with it?
I, I haven't fully developed that, I think those are two alternatives that we need to consider. The, the, coming back to us and having us approve a particular firm, we'll call it, or individual for a particular type of situation makes a lot of sense. On the other hand, it may be easier or more expeditious and get things done to simply delegate that authority to, for example, the city administrator. I think we have to kind of think that one through. I, I'm, I'm more inclined to say we keep the authority ourselves. On the other hand, I, I think we have to be a little more flexible sometimes.
Well, time, time may matter.
Time does matter, yes.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
To use a legal term, time is of the essence.
Yeah, I think for the benefit of all the side councils, probably a good idea to, you know, I've had this conversation, so we're all aware of the situation that, you know, we've maybe come to, uh, the crossroads now, where we have to perhaps look at some different scenarios as opposed to how maybe things have been in the past. And as councilmember Crump reminded us, this is a work session, so we don't necessarily go ahead and make motions and, you know, that type of thing. But, uh, we can certainly revisit this item as an agenda item and, uh, have to, have to go through the actual process.
Yeah, if, if I may, uh, I have some notes just indicating, you know, we'll, we'll talk about it at a future meeting. Um, potentially give some options, you know, motion allow and delegating authority to staff to determine if, you know, what legal counsel fits the city the best. You know, and then also some alternative language, you know, going out for an RFQ for, you know, general legal services, something of that nature. Um, you know, I agree, you know, prosecution, it'd be very difficult to do something where, you know, you have a prosecutor that lives in a different county or, or, you know, that, that isn't nearby, because there's some things that, you know, and really, that, that aspect, I rely fully on the police chief's recommendation for that, because he's the one, or they're the one that, that deals with this, that aspect on a daily basis. So, um, yeah, I think I have enough information where we can proceed at a future meeting, um, and just kind of throw out some options and, you know, feel, I, just, just kind of clean it up a little bit and, and whatever city council feels comfortable doing, you know, we'll obviously do that.
Okay, anything else before we move on? Okay, next item out of the deck is Five Delta, it's the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one goals and priorities, city administrator.
All right, so, here's the, the fun part of everything that we've done so far leading up to this. This is really the second time that we've, um, that a proposal- This is really the second time that we've, um, that I'm proposing to go down this route of this big matrix that you see, um, that kinda ties our, our long-term goals that we've adopted in the past. Um, you know, if you remember back to twenty eighteen, twenty seventeen, we adopted some language that said, uh, here's some long-term goals that we wanna achieve by twenty twenty-two. Um, what we've done is last year was the first year, we can bring that back if we choose, but first year that we've, um, developed, I'll call this like a, a matrix that identifies the long-term goals, uh, some, um, focus areas and some strategies. The focus areas and strategies are really, um, dependent on the comprehensive plan. So, really, the general theme of this goal, um, goal and priority process is, you know, it's all linked to the comprehensive plan. I think everybody's on the same page there that we adopted this comprehensive plan, it's our guiding document. Um, you know, it makes a lot of sense for our goals to be linked directly to it. So, um, you know, Councilmember Kirby, this might be the first time you looked and you said, well, what are the, all these numbers and, and things like that that are associated? It's basically, you know, showing the links between the, the long-term goals or the, basically the long-term goals, the focus areas and the strategies, and how they tie into the actual goals. So, what you'll see in front of you, um, are two goal sets. One is the one that's been adopted by city council last year, the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty goals and staff priorities, and then one that, what I've done, uh, sorry, my microphone is acting up, um, is removed some of the ones that I believe are pretty close to being done, um, that will be finalized here this year, and then I've added, so that's basically I removed five of them that I think are, are gonna get completed within the first half of twenty twenty. Um, and then I've added two goals, um, and I wanna be, you know, twelve goals is a lot of goals, but we can have it be as many goals as we want it to be. Uh, but I've added two in there, um, on what I think that they should be in. I'm sorry, I'm gonna borrow this from the mayor. Um, you know, these are just what, what recommendations and these tie to, you know, one is feedback from city council at a, at a previous retreat, is one, schedule and conduct a future of the city forum in twenty twenty. You know, that was, I think, indicated by Councilmember Crowman, and I saw a lot of nodding, so I thought, well, yeah, this, this is good. I think, you know, we should really do this, it's in our comprehensive plan, let's, let's get it done this year. Um, and the second one is really linked to the, um, presentation by, by Public Services Director, the chair, about the adopted ten-year street and infrastructure improvement plan. You know, we've done CIP, we've done the CEP, we've adopted that three years in a row. Um, this, this street plan is really tied to that, but really it, it takes more of a deep dive into, you know, what can we afford as a community? What do we wanna, you know, we have, we have, um, you know, potential to do a lot here with some of the, the bonded debt that's falling off in the next five years, you know, what do we wanna do with it? You know, and what, 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 what rate pace do we wanna do that with? Um, so those are the two additional on top of the ones that, that we already have in here. You know, the ones that, that I'm saying are gonna carry over from, from last year's adoption would be the policy book, um, the community center metrics, which you've seen we're, we're, we're in the middle of right now and we're trying to understand these things. Um, the volunteer program, which is important. Um, you know, continued working with, uh, the Sauer Henderson School District, uh, which is, which is great. It's a great relationship to have. The transportation and utility plan, have that in, in twenty twenty. Um, and then utilize various housing studies, basically come up with a housing recruitment strategy, kind of a document on how we're, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get additional housing here in the community. So, um, on top of those five that are carryover from, from last year, you know, I'm proposing these two. And really, the way that this works is, is how, you know, what city council, you know, if there's something in there that you want to put in here as a goal, really, I think the, the rules, if there are any, sorry, if there are any rules, are that it, it should be objective, you know, um, where we either do it or we don't, that's in general. Oh, what was that?
I'm just gonna make sure that, there's six of them actually that we completed.
Oh, sorry, sorry, six.
I kept thinking.
Yeah, my number was off. So, there are six that carried over from last year, six that will be completed. We either completed last year or will be completed in the beginning of this year. Um, so, you know, really, it's helpful for, for goals is that, you know, if it's subjective in the sense that you either complete it or you don't, that's easy to quantify, um, for, for the public, for city council, for staff, you know, and it sets these goals. It's kind of a, a rule that I have with, um, staff that set goals for other personnel, is that, you know, you don't want it to be subjective, because one council member might say, oh, yeah, we did it, and one might say, and a lot of these are, you know, there's an end point and, and you complete it. So, really, you know, this is an open conversation. Um, I personally like the, the criteria that we adopted last year. Again, they're directly linked to components of the comprehensive plan. So, really, the ones that aren't, that, that city council, you know, I feel has, you know, the, the focus areas and the strategies, those are really, come straight out of the comprehensive plan. The long-term goals, those are things that, you know, maybe we have a little bit of flexibility to change year to year. Um, you know, those being fiscal responsibility, customer service and planning for the future, those are the three long-term goals that we established last year. So, um, you know, I've, I've tried to incorporate some of the, the things that I've heard here from city council, but if there's something that I missed that we wanna talk about as far as adding to this list, as far as a goal goes, you know, now's the time to do it. Ultimately, what we would like to look at is, is probably evaluating this in April, beginning of April, for possible adoption. So, we have about, you know, a month or so to really refine it, and, uh, you know, we can go from there. So, with it, you know, this is, this is in general an open conversation about, about the goals and priorities for the city and what we wanna do and, and kinda input as far as, does this align with what city council feels as a whole is, is what we wanna strive towards? Or is there something that we wanna, that we missed and we, uh, we wanna add to?
Mr. Mayor?
Okay, Councilmember Crowman.
I'll try to limit mine to three. What on the chart, and since they're from last year, so I'm a year behind asking the question, why are we using the term board lead for the primary, for responsibility? What does that mean? Board lead?
Oh, what, uh, what committee, board, commission, type of thing.
Why are we using board? Just use the word lead?
Lead, lead group or something, we could, yeah.
Board lead just sounds like there's some, we don't have boards. We have commissions and, you know, committees and... Okay, that's one. Number two is, uh, under goal number seven proposed, I would say that rather than city council, that should be the comprehensive plan action team.
Yeah.
Pin it down to where it can go and get done. And finally, since there are some blanks, and by the way, I, I'll go beyond my three and say four things, I very much favor eliminating the number of goals, 'cause you have too many, you don't get anything done. And we had a very aggressive plan last year and we were very successful, but for goal number nine, I would have, I'm not sure of the exact wording, to be clear, but the service area, uh, territory acquisition, uh, from MDEC. Now, we may not wanna say accomplish it, but we wanna have a complete study and, um, direction that we're gonna take. I don't know if that makes any sense. I, I think there's a lot of homework to be done, but we should at least put that in our plan, that we're going to do that and accomplish that, so.
Yeah, I think I, Rich and myself talked about that, you know, that there's, there's so many unknowns about it, but I think what we can put in there, something like electric service area acquisition evaluation or something like that, because, you know, I don't want, we don't know, we don't know the numbers, we don't have all the information, but, you know, it's important that we look at it. I think that's the, that, that's the intent of what you're, what you're trying to say. So, I think, I mean, I think there's more, we, we, we talked about it, we were gonna put something in there like that, but, um, you know, there's just, there's, there's a lot of unknowns, so.
But I think having it as a goal means we'll get it done. If we don't, it may get put to the fifth stage backwards, so.
Think what you're talking about is a feasibility plan.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, goal one, two, six, seven, eight, and ten were the ones that were completed last year off our twenty nineteen, twenty twenty goals and staff. Goals three, four, five, nine, eleven, and twelve are the ones that are carryovers that you'll see up on the top. Everybody understands the numbers, the, the, uh, the, uh, the large, the capital letters and also the Roman numerals. How do we get that? Any questions on that?
Yeah, I'll just clarify, you know, the, the CIP, CEP, we've, we've kinda changed the culture of the city to actually, you know, that's the norm now. We do that every year. You know, we're gonna continue to do it, but I don't, I don't think it rises to the level of putting it on this goal sheet, because we're gonna do it.
Yeah, that's complete, yeah. And in addition to Councilmember Crowman's, uh, thought about the MDEC, the MMBA, electrical service territory, I think that we probably need to put something on there as far as, what I alluded to earlier, as far as pavement management and the street plan overlay, to make sure that we're not forgetting about any of the streets that aren't represented within the next ten years. What's you guys' thoughts on that?
Say that again, I'm sorry.
We wanna have some kind of a pavement management plan, street plan, which we've talked about tonight, that is gonna be an overlay, so to say, to make sure that we're covering all of our eighteen point six miles of streets within the city of the store, and not getting any of those streets, like you had mentioned, Caucasals as an example. We wanna make sure that we're doing a thorough review of all of our streets, and that all of our streets are getting the attention within that ten-year period. So, if we don't put it out in the plan, most likely it's not gonna be something that's gonna be getting done. Anybody else feel that we should do that? Or am I the only one?
No.
Anybody else have anything they'd like to throw out there as a potential goal?
The only other one, the city has now acquired the wastewater treatment plant, and, uh, one of the things that we have been asking for as the PUC was a, uh, a list of the, uh, the things that need to be done there. Um, this is now a new utility to the city theoretically, and the rest of this city council should be up on what that stuff is, 'cause we're making, we're gonna be approving money to go into that here, and there's three of us that know a little bit more about that than what the rest do. We get briefed on everything else from the, uh, from the utilities, that's the one, you guys probably know the least about.
You wanna make that a, an item, goal eleven?
I, I think I'd like to have something to get all of us up to speed on that, because that is legitimate utility now through the city.
If I may, this is, you know, we, we talked about it at, at Murph Puck a bit, we have software, asset management software that we purchased with the city, that we can basically put every asset that we have in there and attach a replacement schedule to it. You know, that's being implemented as we speak. You know, that, to me, is an item that we're striving to get. Um, I think it'd be perfectly fine to have a comprehensive wastewater treatment plant, CIP, CEP, like a ten-year plan. Um, but in, in reality, I'll just tell you, I think it'd probably be like a twenty twenty-one completion date for it, which is fine, these are twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one goals. Um, there's this, I've had to talk with, with my staff, is, you know, we have a lot of irons in the fire right now, we need to finish some of these things off, and then we can really give, um, the attention that's needed to some of these new things. So, that's my general theme that I've been talking to my staff about, but I think it's great, we are working on it. Um, but it will be, it's a process to get all of that inventory, definitely. But I think it's, I agree, it's a good goal.
In a way, it probably could, uh, be part of goal five, when I was talking about the transportation utility plan too, because it is referencing the utilities. Cause I was gonna bring up about, perhaps we might wanna have something regarding the water plan. I don't know if we wanna single these things out, because, you know, we just heard tonight about the fact that we're needing two million gallons of water a day and we're supplying one point six million. So, I mean, that's, that's something that should be on our radar to be making some corrective actions to. I know we have it as CIP item down the road for next year, but is it something we ought to be focusing on even more this year? Just asking. Councilmember Sullivan.
To pay you back, uh, you know, as a member of families, this point though, I think there's one topic we missed tonight in the public services discussion, was the wastewater treatment plan. You know, there are three of us sitting here that know a lot about that plan, a lot of the things that have happened in the last couple of years with that plan, but there, we also know a lot of issues that are coming up that are gonna have to be dealt with. I think it'd be important to have a topic at some point in the near future discussing what that looks like long-term, now that it is an enterprise of ours.
You know, w- we were being presented, um, monthly from staff as to what was going on with that facility, and, um, I, I think that we should have something established at least quarterly.
Some touch points along.
Because, again, it's being run different, it's all staff entirely without the PUC being involved, and all of us are financially, basically responsible for that, and I think that we need to be kept up with it. Uh, they're, they're great, I mean, they do a great job, it's, that's not it. It's that, as a council, that's the one utility that we, as a council, are the least, um, informed of. And how do we talk on it? How do you guys talk on this to other people when you don't know about it?
I think it's a great idea, you know, we're, we're, we basically, we're three months into it being ours. Um, you know, we're still working through some logistical things with billing, you know, um, you know, the Henderson partnership that we've established through the dissolution agreements and basically the four agreements that we have, so we're working through those things. I'm generally pretty happy with it. Um, you know, there's things that have come up that, you know, we didn't think would be an issue this early in, into it, but I think it's a great idea. I think overall it'd be great, maybe to even go visit the wastewater treatment plant and everybody gets a tour to kinda say, well, this is now our asset, this is ours completely, it's not this joint power's own entity, it's, this is ours, you know, these are the different components of it. Um, and here, you know, there's a potential issue there, there's a, you know, things that we need to plan, but I think, um, you know, in general, going back to the goal, you know, having a comprehensive wastewater treatment plant, CIP, CEP, you know, a ten-year plan for that is something I think we're, we're currently striving to get. Again, you know, it would be something that, you know, I think would be, you know, I think really is completed by the end of the year, but really, I'm thinking it'd be a twenty twenty-one item to really get it dialed in. Um, you know, the immediate needs, you know, you'll, you'll see those in the, in the CIP, CEP, the five year that we adopt, but, um, you know, a, a better general understanding of the wastewater treatment plan, since it's now entirely ours, I think that'd be great for the city council. So, I don't know if we need to put that in as a goal, but I think it's good feedback. You know, I have a future topic, you know, quarterly updates for, for the wastewater treatment plan.
I, I would argue that it should be a goal, and that it should include the CIP, CEP, and, uh, I'm gonna call them transition updates. I think we're still in learning mode, and we need to be aware of what those issues are.
And the thing is, is that if you're, if you're seeing things already, then we're, we're, we're on that topic again of not being informed, and we don't know what to talk to somebody about. You know, how, how our city staff handles things and how the other communities' staff handles things and how they talk to people, I don't wanna be having a discussion with somebody that I, I, my daughter goes to school with, with their parents that live in Henderson, and are asking me all kinds of questions and, and stuff that I can't answer, because I don't know.
I think that, uh, this, right now, this is strictly a placeholder, because we haven't approved any of this as of yet, but I'm guessing there's something maybe on the side of the room that you might want to throw out there as a goal?
Of course, I'll do that, that's okay. I, I, I'll just say that one of those three guys at Murph Puck, I, I completely agree with my other side of the aisle, I guess you wanna call it. Because I gotta ask you, it's like a Murph Puck withdrawal kind of thing? When you did it once a month, did you know what was going on? And the last time our meeting had, our last meeting we had, we were on the verge of going broke, and now I see you three months later going, hey, whatever happened to that Murph Puck, you know, and so...
Total transition.
Total transition. It's gotta withdraw, so. We need to put it as a goal, I think, so.
Councilmember. Councilmember Schluter or anything?
Just real quick, I just wanna kinda reiterate what, uh, Councilmember Crowman said, I thi- I think the less goals, the better, so that we can achieve the things we wanna achieve. I'm just wondering if a thorough review of the streets and, and the, um, water treatment could kinda streamline a little bit in with goal number five also, if we got a little more specific with it. So, that, that's my only thought, so.
If I may, I was gonna go circle back to the pavement management plan review, um, you know, ensuring that the maintenance is occurring on those other streets that are, you know, queued up. You know, I think that, I think that honestly it, it ties in better than with the, the transportation plan, just so everybody knows what that is, is it's looking at basically future roads within the community and what that could look like based on the, the, um, you know, future land use. Um, but really it could tie into goal number eight really well, um, as far as that, that ten-year plan for street infrastructure improvements, you know, building in there, you know, what we think for, see for maintenance, but the maintenance part is very difficult to pin down because it might look good this year and then we think it's gonna last five years and then all of a sudden something, you know, weather-wise, freeze thaw happens and now it, you know, now that's the number one priority. Um, it could just be some assurances that we're looking at everything and, you know, have a robust reporting system and, and, you know, if something's an issue and somebody's reporting it, it's getting taken care of, and we have, we have the means within the department to take care of, of some of these smaller items, um, basically in, in near real time, you know, if there's a, if there's a pothole, we have a trailer, we can go out and literally fill that pothole and, and have a temporary fix pretty quickly. Um, E J's looking at me, but that's, that's the intent of the trailer, I mean, once we can start getting, you know, hot mix, once the plants start building, or you start, start making it, we'll be out there and we'll be out there filling pottles and I mean, we, it, things looked really good at the end of last summer, right? You know, I think a lot of the areas were addressed, but we know that that's a temporary fix, you know, we're kind of just buying time to do something bigger. So I think it really ties in to, to regroup that pavement management plan, to look at that, you know, in the, in the full CIP, CEP of the, the, the streets and, and infrastructure improvement plan, I think it ties in with that. I think we have to look at like our streets and our utilities as kind of a singular asset that we look at holistically, you know, not individually, but, you know, to make sure that in general, you know, we'll communicate if we need additional funds and it might be, well, we're gonna take a little bit away from the actual, the, the pavement project and, and have to reinvest it in maintenance instead, so. I think that's kind of a fluid thing, we don't really know. You know, we could have something like, uh, you know, a washout on Dopey Lane again and, you know, all of a sudden it costs a lot of money to, to, to fix it, so. I think we just, to me, I think it's an acknowledgement that we need to do it, that we need to look at all the streets. Um, but I don't know beyond that, what we, what we can really do as far as planning out the maintenance, because that's really, you know, an annual, annually changes, you know? Cause we don't really know what's gonna, what we're gonna have to do in the summer of twenty twenty until we get through this freeze thaw cycle this spring.
Well, I guess in fairness, we could basically take goal ten, that pavement management plan, street plan, and put it into goal eight and take goal nine and goal eleven because they both deal with utilities of one form or another and put them into goal five. And therefore we haven't created anything more than the two that staff's already identified. That we've already talked about in the past.
So I, I would, personally, I prefer to keep, leave goal five alone because that's a huge deal, that's a huge undertaking already. Um, and really we're looking at future areas, not necessarily what we have existing unless we have existing infrastructure that needs to be replaced, like a four-inch water main with an eight-inch. Um, so I would prefer, you know, if, on paper, you know, combining them, but really that would make, that would make goal five very, very challenging. And, and I think that goal five has a, a goal date of having it adopted this year, whereas some of the other stuff might leak into twenty twenty-one and get done, so. I, twenty, goal five is a, is a huge deal, we need to do it this year. Um, I would prefer not to add anything to it, I'd rather have it be separate goals that we can, that we can look at, I think that'd be helpful for staff.
One thing on goal five, land use, future land use should be in that definition.
So that's the only thing I'd add to five, not any of the other things.
If, if we wanted to, just a, a, a heads up on that, the future land use and priority growth area. Uh, the way that we've, we've scheduled out the meetings for the plant, because basically that has to go to planning commission, then the city council. We hope that that gets done in the first half of twenty twenty, we can add that to that, I would say, um, you know, you could use that as, I would put that as a separate goal, you know, complete the future land use and priority growth area for the city if we wanted to do that. Uh, but it is, it, it, we have it scheduled, I think, um, we hope that it hits the planning commission, that meeting in April for them, so that they can look at what it is. Um, and then potentially give a recommendation to city council to adopt it and we go through the, um, amendment process for the comp plan. But that's, that's really step one for the transportation plan, so we gotta get that done before we can do the transportation and utility plan.
I think that that should be a goal. Make the goal, yeah, the planning commission, as Mr. Sulu pointed out, and actually the one that brought that to you, your attention before, um, it, it makes it clear, yes.
So not to mention, we use this to go back to look to see, um, at the end of the year, what, what we're working on and what we completed, and that shouldn't be forgotten.
It's always good to have a goal, you know you're gonna really accomplish.
Sure.
I, I have another one I'll offer up, um, it may sound a little anti-comp plan, I don't think it is, I don't think we really need goal three, the volunteer program, I think that's a distraction from all the other stuff we're doing, but I'll simply say that and let others give their opinion. I think we've got enough without a city council working on volunteer planning.
Yeah, I know, we're. If, if I may, the, the reason it's in there is cause it's specifically called out in the comp plan to do something. The, if I, so, I'll let you know, I'm working on it, I've established, you know, we, we wanna have a software that kinda does all the work for us. Um, but it is, I mean, it's, I, i- if I could devote one week to it, I could get it really dialed in, you know, but it's, it's harder to find one week of time, you know, so.
Well, you're on vacation.
Yeah.
Well, the city, the city council being the lead group for that goal, quite frankly, the way I look at that particular goal is being able to advocate within our ci- uh, citizen community to get involved in volunteering. That's about all we can do as members of city council.
In, in, that's, I mean, that's perfectly fine if we wanna remove a goal and we wanna reprioritize, that, that's great. Um, right now, my count, including goal number three, we're at eleven. Um, right now, that's, that's if we combine the pavement management plan, the, the maintenance with number eight, you know?
I, I'm there with you too.
So we can do that, if we remove number three, we would be at ten, um, you know?
How'd you get eleven, I only count tens if we combine them?
Uh, so goal number, goal number nine would be electric service area evaluation and feasibility. Uh, goal number ten would be comprehensive water, wastewater treatment plan, CIP, CEP, uh, for ten years and quarterly updates. Um, number eleven would be the priority growth area, future reviews.
Okay, thank you.
And I'm just, I'm, I'm, I'm paraphrasing, I'll come up with some good language for it for the meeting. Uh, but yeah, so if we, if we eliminate three, um, then we got ten, if we keep three, then we have eleven.
Anybody else think of anything?
I have something, but I don't wanna add it to this list.
Is it something that?
It's something that should be very, very simple.
Shouldn't be on the list?
Well, no, but it's something that staff should, we should really, it needs to get taken care of, cause it bothers me every time I come here and I sit down and I look at all the parts of this desk that is not completed, but the break room upstairs is done.
Um, I think you've seen me reach out to the, to the fire chief, because he's the one who would do that, so I will get on him to do, to finish this.
It's been two years, three years.
What are you talking about?
All of the stuff that's not completed underneath it?
It just needs some trim, some quarter out or something like that, then.
Mr. Mayor, again, we've not made this, we've, we've added these without really voting on them.
Right, this is just a working document.
And I think we need to keep that in mind, but if we have a consensus that goal three should go, we should say it is not, I think.
We, if, if I may, we can keep it in there and then it, it, when we actually look at it and evaluate it, we can, we can remove it and then we can adjust it accordingly and, and adopt it in that manner. Really the intent is, are, are we covering what we think we should accomplish in the next two years? Is it too lean, too much, you know, from a staff standpoint? You know, really, we need to, we need to finish up the projects that we've started, we've taken quite a bit on in the last year or two. Um, you know, really because some of these things really need, they're, they're gonna be, you know, they really need our attention to do them well. There's some big, big-ticket, uh, community planning items that, that we prioritize.
You know, there's another thing that we all have to think about too here, and that's the way staff is evaluated down to performance evals. We have to make sure that we can tie our goals to the performance reviews, in this particular case, we, we're responsible for our city administrator right here, so we, we don't want the list too lean, but we don't want it so long that it's absolutely impossible to get anything done this year, or we take everything that we want to do in twenty twenty and get the can down to twenty twenty-one. So we have to be mindful of that too, so maybe between now and the time we revisit our goals and priorities, which I'm thinking will probably be, what, three meetings for now?
I believe so, so we have a meeting on the ninth, um, I believe the, the mayor will be absent from that, I believe I'll be absent next, and from the twenty-third. So I think it's the thirteenth of April, we'll look at these and potentially have them.
So we ought to be reviewing this and, you know, think about not only the things that we've talked about tonight amongst ourselves, but also thinking about how this would have an impact on the performance evaluations of our staff members.
Well, on, on top of that, on top of what you're saying, we also need to make sure that the city administrator's evaluation is done before,
Yeah.
uh, before December.
That's correct, yeah, we might have that done, yeah. Okay, anything else in regards to, uh, five delta? Okay, let's go on in then to our, we're not gonna go ahead and go through our, uh, normal go around the table type of thing, so at this point, I'll go ahead and ask for a motion to adjourn.
So.
Second.